October 6th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. We're going to begin with the minutes of our last meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those? What comments are there for last week's, last month's meetings? Comments from the staff?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have one. Under 205 Stratford Avenue, it said, "Staff supports a waiver of the cartway widening on both Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue. Staff would support a waiver of the 60-foot right-of-way on Eagle," although it requires an 80. I'm not speaking for our consultants in any way or the solicitor, but I do not support the waiver of the right-of-way requirement of 80 feet for this development. I see no reason why it should not be provided. And it gives the township the ability sometime in the future to perhaps make, to implement some type of project, whatever that may be, when we're all not here anymore. But I do not see any reason to provide that waiver.
Okay. Any other changes to the minutes? Okay, let's make that change, and then can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended by Mr. Norsini.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Okay, we're going to switch the order a bit from our agenda, and we're going to look at 460, I'm sorry, 560 and 564 Maple Avenue. This is a subdivision and consolidation plan. Anyone want to come on up?
Hi, good evening. Debbie Schulsky here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me this evening is Bob Lampert. We think this application is fairly straightforward. We're actually going from three lots to two lots. We're taking the back parcel, and it's going to be subdivided, and each of that portion is going to be merged onto the respective lots in front of it. We have several review letters from your consultants. None of them raise any issues. I think there was one technical issue that was a will comply, but other than that, we are pretty clean letters.
Thank you. Did staff have anything they wanted to comment on this application? You guys are good?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, just as a matter of interest. One lot is, has an address of Edgehill Road, as I recall, on there.
That's correct.
Where was the access point to that lot? Just as a matter of curiosity, actually.
I'm not sure why it actually had a dress of Edgehill Road. That may have been the original parent tract. The access to it was actually an easement through this property right here.
Oh, okay. So it did not have frontage?
It did not have frontage on Edgehill.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
The whole, all three lots are Zoned A agriculture. Is that accurate?
Yes, I believe so.
So you're not going for any kind of zoning change in this?
No, no.
The only, the only reason I ask is that I wanted to make sure that in adding these two acres in, there's not possibility of a further or a different reconfiguration or subdivide, but with the minimum of two acres, you can't do anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you.
There were several waivers that we are requesting, predominantly because there's no improvements that are proposed. It's just strictly a lot line change. But for the fact that one of the owners is a separate ownership, it probably could have just been done through a lot line change. But there's one owner, then each of the other respective lots are purchasing.
Okay, would you like to list the waivers that you're requesting again?
Yes, there's waivers from having to provide significant features within 500 feet, and that's Section 255-22B1K. Then there's from having to provide contour information, and that's from Section 255-22B1P and Q. From having to show large trees over six inches in caliber, and that's 255-22B1R. And the last one, we weren't sure if it was necessary or not, but we were proceeding forward with just a final plan. We didn't know if we had to seek a waiver from having to proceed separately for preliminary first and then final plan, and that was Section 255-12 and 255-14.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter? Any board comment?
Neighbors would have all received notice about, I mean, this is like a, okay.
Apparently 112 notices were sent out.
I'm going to move that we approve the plan and grant the waivers as requested.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the addressing plan. This is the final coming in. And who's John? This is the one that you all had on your computer? Flash offs?
Yes.
Yes.
And David, can I get the highlighted set? What we'd like to do tonight, there are about four or five places on the plan where there are issues that should be discussed, either out of Roger's letter, Amy's letter, or the board conditions. So if we could focus on those, you can kind of see them highlighted, and I want to start with, there are three intersections that Amy's noted that are not 90-degree intersections. All three of these are existing conditions on the site with existing driveways that are being converted. Two of them deal with this one-way road coming in the western part of the loop, where the entrance here as a one-way in is not 90 degrees, and we just don't want to have to take down that big, beautiful arch and entrance there. PennDOT will actually determine whether they'll let us keep it like that, but in our meeting with PennDOT, they seem to have no problem because it was a one-way road. The other place is where it meets the other part of the loop, which is basically a long straight road across from the driveway into the mansion. There is a big stone bridge right there. It's a treed area right there. One of the reasons why we proposed to not go with a one-way loop like we had talked about, on the first meetings we had had, but make this two-way is because it's almost impossible to improve that without taking out a lot of trees, taking out that old stone bridge and everything else. So that was the reason for it. And once again, it's, it's a one-way intersection, you know, only going, only coming in. There's not people making a 90-degree turn or 120-degree turn to go, turn and go out that way. And the third one is right here, which is the existing driveway that goes all the way back and out to Godfrey Road, but is, the first portion of it is being widened into a cul-de-sac for these six houses. And once again, it's, it's an area that is existing, and the trees around it, taking it and trying to make that, you know, a turn that comes in at 90 degrees instead of the natural look of it is the, those are the three places. We kind of treated, we didn't ask for waivers on them because we treated them as existing conditions. But if you think we need waivers on them, we would request that the waivers on those three be recommended. So that's, that's our first item. Do you want to take these item by item? It probably would be easier.
Well, I want to wait and see what the board really wants to talk about.
Okay.
Which, which things are important to them.
Okay. Do you want me to go through the other highlighted areas that I then had, the other places that we were going to talk to you about, and then you can decide which ones? We are redesigning two cul-de-sacs. We're just advising you of that because we think that you will really like what we're doing. This cul-de-sac here on the east side swung into the trees. I think there were like 19 to 20 trees that were having to come out in some form because of the cul-de-sac and the grading for it. That is going to be brought back to where the, the panhandle is and turned the other way, or turned more straight, so that it will not impact the woods. So we will be pulling that out of the trees and saving those trees along there. And then the second place that we're doing the same thing is the cul-de-sac here between, at the shared driveways between these two sets of houses. It looks like it's out of the woods, but it really just kind of necked four or five trees in there. And by pulling it back, and when we went to the final plan, we'll be able to, to save trees there as well. So we just wanted you to know that those two places are being redesigned, and we'll go to Roger for his review. But from a planning standpoint, that was the reason for them. The third thing, just to be sure people know, there was, the plans didn't label this emergency access, but it was, it's shown as an emergency access, and it will get labeled that way. With respect to a comment from Amy about a turnaround here, what we have done, because it serves those three lots here, plus this driveway into here, instead of providing a big cul-de-sac in there, what we've done is provided a widened roadway. It widens out to 60 feet, or 30 feet, so that any traffic that comes in there is able to turn around and go back out. It just looked like a more pleasing, less obtrusive way of, of handling that area. There are woods along the north side of that, and so we didn't want to be turning a bulb into that. Let's see. The next thing we had is with respect to the walking path along Newtown Road. We did meet with PennDOT. PennDOT's requirement was, we're twofold, one, that you have four feet of grass between Newtown Road and the pathway, and second, that the pathway be ADA compliant. Both of which mean that we can't put a formalized pathway along there. And so we've prepared the, the same specs as we're up in Attlebury for the length of it, to provide to Roger to confirm the cost of, of that, so that we can contribute that to paths other places, like the Wheeler Field or wherever the township wants to put them. But that was the requirement from the, from the commissioners. And the last one, and I will pull up some additional plans here, or else you can take them in order, and we'll, we'll pull that up at the, at the time. But we have prepared sight lines into all four of these lots. We have shown the planning. We have actually revised the location of where the pine trees were. If you remember, the pine trees were interspersed in the woods, so that you got some evergreen screening from the very start. Well, we've concentrated the pine trees in front, made sure that they're concentrated in front of those lots, not as a row, but interspersed in the woods, so that when the leaves are down, you would still have what from a distance might look like a straight line of pine trees, but they're, they're staggered in the woods in front of each of those four houses, so that we're getting the impact of those pine trees that you've asked. We've looked at it with a 35-foot setback, and what we're suggesting is that it be increased to, on those, on lots three, four, and five, be increased to 60 feet of setback, so that those houses can move slightly down and away from the road, so that the sight line goes up, and as the trees go, they get blocked faster. The one on 3-2, actually, the further back you go, the further up you go. So that on 3-2, we're recommending, or we're, we're suggesting that the plan have a note that follows the exact requirement of the conditional use. That is, at the time of building permit, the location of the house on that lot will be subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. Because until you know what's proposed, until you know when it's proposed and how the trees are, there isn't a, an easy fix like moving the setback lines back on the other ones. There's just not a place that, other than all the way up, where it's really shown already, that would be any better. And that way, you would also have a grading plan for that lot at the same time, so that grading plan may include taking down some of the side hill that would allow the house to come down anyway. So those were the things we thought should be discussed. If you have others, we're happy to discuss them.
Okay, hang on one second. Maybe we could, everyone could, could let the group know what topics you want to be sure we cover tonight. What have you got to?
I would just, I just don't see it, so I'd like to see placement of where the fire hydrants are in this property.
Okay.
Inside the development.
Yeah.
And that's one. The other is, I do want to look at a couple of these intersections that Amy referenced, because I have the aerial picture overlay. That's, right. And the other thing is, just taking a closer look at this.
The sightlines?
The sightlines. And I do want to confirm, which was the road D that the turnaround at Termini for road D? Which one is that? So that's that one?
That's that.
Okay, all right, I just couldn't read the, the letters of it. And I think those were the big things from it.
Okay, who else has items that they want to be sure to get to tonight?
I do. One thing that concerns me, and I'm not sure where exactly, want to address it, maybe here, because we're talking about the width of roads and so forth. We had a letter in our packet from Ray Daly, who was the Building Codes and Fire Codes official.
Yes.
And he seemed concerned with the width. And I'm thinking of liability here, because he's saying that the, basically, I think it was a little sarcastic, but I get his point.
Yes, it was.
They can't get a variance from fighting a fire. So we need to be concerned about granting a variance, so they don't feel that they can get in there. And he said, I've been told that-
Kathy, can you just tell me what other topics you want to get over, and then we'll get into that one?
Oh, okay, sure. The other thing was the intersection, neighborhoods lane in Newtown Road. I have a couple of things concerning that, the, how traffic is going to be handled, and also the intersection of Newtown and Darby Paoli. They're my primary concerns, the traffic there.
Traffic there and intersection.
And fire and safety codes issues.
Anybody else? Why don't we start with Ray Daly's letter, because that was something that we all noticed. He wrote a very strong letter.
Julia, can I just step in?
Please.
But just to remind the Planning Commission, I believe the Board of Commissioners has already granted a waiver to the road width. So I think just talking about that is just talking about something that's already been decided by the board.
Okay.
Because I don't know how much worth that would add to this discussion.
Then what's, by doing that, and we have a letter in advance of the subdivision, when things can be changed, are we setting ourselves up for liability if perhaps there's a fire in there and the fire equipment can't get in there?
No.
Okay.
No, there's no liability. Not only that, these are going to be private roads.
No, they're, no, they're public streets.
Are they public streets?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. But no, no liability, no.
Even if they were private roads, I think we're allowing a subdivision to take place. And if we're allowing a subdivision to take place, it's going where it's been told to us in advance that fire equipment can't get in there, I think we have a certain amount of responsibility. But your lawyer-
I believe if you read further down in Mr. Daly's letter, also, he recommends that there be no parking on the one side of the street.
Right.
Which, and, and some of the staff meetings that we had seemed to be acceptable to them, as long as the parking was restricted, they would be able to at least have access to these houses.
How about where the, several lots come together? And I think he mentioned, where is it? Long Dead End cul-de-sacs and multifamily shared driveways, where they would have trouble getting in. You're okay, you're handling, going to figure out a way of getting the equipment in there?
Well, I believe the roadways are wide enough for the equipment to physically get in there. What Mr. Daly was talking about was having, and again, I don't want to speak for him, but from, from what we discussed in staff, it was getting fire equipment past other fire equipment, and for the most part, even on a 24-foot wide roadway, that would be difficult.
Okay, if you're comfortable with it.
Can we start with one that's, we've talked about before, which is the, the sidewalk along Newtown Road? I know that I was a strong proponent of getting a, a walkway through there, or at least planning to have one someday in the future. For instance, if that road needs to be rebuilt, and we have a chance to move things around. I just want to confirm what I think I've heard before, which is that if that road is someday rebuilt, we already have the right-of-way up to the wall.
That's correct.
So if it's not feasible at the moment to put in a, either a walking path or a sidewalk through there, for my, I would like to be sure that that's something that as a township, we are still keeping open, that it's something that would be, increase the safety of that road tremendously for pedestrians and connect various parts of the township. Is there anything else? I'm asking staff, I guess. Is there anything else we can do to help protect that for the future, or are we all Sorry.
I mean, is the Planning Commission looking for more right-of-way than they're currently providing?
No.
No. You're talking about the issue inside the, where the, from the wall beyond it, right?
The path.
The path.
Yeah. Well, I'd like it on the outside of the wall, because-
I think the applicant said they can't do, they didn't say they didn't want to do the path. They said they can't do the path because it has to be ADA compliant.
Yeah, it's a, it's a PennDOT issue, but-
The road would have to be regraded.
The, the road right-of-way will still be there. It won't be removed, and if any, if they reconstruct and slide the road slightly to the other side, so that they can put the four feet of grass and then they're ADA compliant pathway, it can be put there. The, the issue right now is that PennDOT, because of their requirements, want, will only, they, their words were, I think Amy will say it, "We won't, we won't let you do it unless it has four feet of grass before the, the sidewalk, or the pavement, or the path, or whatever it is, and it's ADA compliant." So.
I would agree with that. And then I guess the only other issue would be if the applicant is going to set aside funds that, from that, to build a trail, to put into money for trails elsewhere, it would be, I'm just asking, it's impractical, is it not, to save that money for something in Newtown Square, since it would be probably quite a way in the future?
You mean Newtown Road?
I'm sorry, Newtown Road. Not send our money to Newtown Square.
I thought the way it read is that the money would go toward Wheeler and Quarry Trails.
Yeah.
That's, that that's what would be used for.
That's what the board said.
Okay. Thanks for letting me cover that.
Why can't it be ADA compliant? Is it topography?
Well, you can't, right now, there are places that are like four feet to the wall, let alone-
Oh, so because of the grass requirement?
Yes, the grass end, because the board agreed that what they wanted was something like at Attlebury, which is stone and not paving. So they were, they were wanting a footpath. They weren't wanting a paved sidewalk or a paved path. Now, do I think that that might, I mean, obviously, obviously Attlebury got approved, so-
Does that mean Attlebury is not ADA compliant?
It is, and, and I think you're misunderstanding what PennDOT said, because-
Okay.
The stone path is allowed. You had to, it couldn't be a trip hazard. There are some requirements that go with it. But in order for it to be ADA acceptable, it needs to be four feet wide. They did require a separation from the travel lane, and every 200 feet, you need to have a five-foot area where you can do wheelchair, chair passing. So you wouldn't be able to meet the ADA standards on that roadway, because it's too narrow. There's a lot of grading issues. There's a lot of issues along that road that you couldn't construct them right now. It's a constructibility issue.
But, but you would be able to do that later if they moved the road a little bit?
Possibly, yes. If they came in and reconstructed the road, you could possibly alter the alignment and move it more towards the other side, if you decided, or something along those lines. Okay, but not practical at this time.
Well, you could put in a sidewalk on the part that's the township's property and go inside the wall.
That was going to be my question. Is the wall in the right-of-way, or does the right-of-way go right up to the wall?
I believe the answer is yes.
Roger, does, is the wall in the right-of-way, or does the right-of-way go right up to the wall?
I believe there are portions where the wall will be in the right-of-way, and then portions where it's not, and it would be on the private property.
Okay, so I mean, just, I, because my recollection of this is that the reason this is such an issue is that the applicant won't let us put the walkway inside the wall. If the, if the walkway were inside the wall, this would all go away.
That's been their position.
Okay, yes.
And there will be parts of the wall right in here, which is the narrowest point between the wall and the roadway, which will get, the wall will get removed and moved further in, off of the road because of sight distance. So we are going to be reconstructing a part of that wall and moving it back away.
When you do that, are you going to set it far enough from the edge of the road that they would be able to, or is this just a waste of time?
I, I don't know what the design on that is, but it's got to be at least far enough back for the sight distance, so.
Okay, can we move on to the sightlines from the field up to the four houses?
Well, before we move on-
I'm sorry.
I mean, I think it's important to note that it's not that a path can't be put in there, it's just cost prohibitive. You could move the wall everywhere if you really needed to get that grass buffer. You know, it's, obviously it's-
You're correct, it is cost prohibitive to move that entire wall.
Yeah, we have to say that it's not feasible for economic reasons, not that it's impossible. You have the right-of-way, it's just that the wall is in the way.
The only thing that's impossible is to put the sidewalk or path in between the existing road and the existing wall.
Without moving it, exactly.
Right, that's the only thing that's impossible.
So, so why are we completely rejecting the idea of putting it inside the wall? That's what I'm confused by.
It's their property.
In addition to the location of the wall and the separation from the road, there are also grade issues. As you come down towards Darby Paoli, it's, it's steep down there. And again, going back to the ADA compliant issues, the grades there are too steep for ADA compliant, where you'd have to offset it and do switchbacks, or whatever would need to take to, to make sure that those grades were flat enough for ADA compliance, and you don't have the room there to do that.
Good, that's important information to have. So the, the intention now is that the funding from what would have been constructed by requirement will be allocated for elsewhere within the public space on this tract? Or is, are we tying it directly?
Yes, from the quarry and Wheeler.
Is that, is that a legal agreement that it's going to go directly to that?
That's, that's the, the Board of Commissioners' desire, that it go there. Our, our position was that if we couldn't build it because PennDOT requirements couldn't be met, that we would contribute the cost. So the decision as to where it's going is being made by the commissioners. We're not, we basically are neutral on that. That's up, totally up to them.
And I have a question then for staff. With the township develop, development of more open space in connection to our parks down here with this purchase, I imagine that more people will be walking on Newtown Road than do now. And already, there are some people walking on Newtown Road. But, you know, we're saying, well, there's ADA issues, we can't put a sidewalk in, but that's not going to stop people from walking on Newtown Road. So have we thought about other safety precautions, other safety, things that we could do to improve the safety of that road for pedestrians walking on the road?
I'd like to make a quick comment here. There is a maximum slope for ramps, things like that, when you're having buildings, it's one in 12. But if you're doing sidewalks on the sides of hills and natural topographical stuff, those generally don't apply. Now, like, if you have like something like a train station where you have to, you have to have ramps and access to a train station, you do, you're building ramps, and so they have to comply in that way. Yeah, we could not build a, because of the top of topography of that road, you wouldn't be able to build a sidewalk next to it that meets the one in 12 stuff, where a switchback would be helpful. That's not a legal requirement of the ADA. The only reason I know that is that's what I, part of what I do for my regular job.
Is that for public facilities or private facilities?
It's public sidewalks and, and generally private stuff.
In public right-of-ways?
Yeah, public rights. I'll, I'll go look it up for you if you want, but yeah, that's the case.
I might add, it's, it's not necessarily the slope of the sidewalk in length, in a linear fashion. So in some portions on Newtown Road-
linear fashion, so in some portions on Newtown Road, there's a very steep embankment from the edge of the paving to the wall, and to cut that sidewalk in, that's where the problems began with getting a four-foot grass verge room to do that and, and to excavate that. And I, not speaking for the applicant, but we were all in on the PennDOT meeting, because we all wanted to see these paths go in, but these were all the items that did come up, so...
I don't argue that, it's just, the slope is not the controlling factor.
So, if we're not getting a path at this particular time, what can we do to make that road safer for the people that we know are going to walk on it?
I don't think you want to encourage people to walk on the road.
But that won't prevent them.
I, if, if you're looking at possibly having them on the grass, I mean, if you're going to encourage people to walk on that road, then you should be putting in your ADA facilities, because you're basically prohibiting people in a wheelchair from using that pathway. So, for us to be making a discussion about making improvements so that pedestrians can use it, I would caution against doing that.
I think it's important that we realize that pedestrians do use it.
However, if you think it would be at their own, yes, and I, I think if you're, if you would like perhaps some kind of maintenance of the right-of-way between the wall and the roadway might be beneficial, as far as...
I don't understand why it has to be ADA compliant, I mean, there are other trails and paths in the township that are comparatively recent that are definitely not ADA compliant. The Brook Farm Trail, right near West Wayne, I mean, Wayne Elementary, there's no way a wheelchair goes five feet on that.
But is that in, in a right-of-way owned by PennDOT?
Probably, I don't know if Maplewood is...
See, it's the PennDOT requirement.
Is Maplewood PennDOT? Oh.
So, and...
Okay, now I don't want to get too bogged down in this issue, but I wanted to make sure that we thought it through, what our options were for people moving around that area.
And I, we agree with you, it's just that I agree with your staff that for you to get officially into it, puts you all the way into it, and for you to look at things that you might suggest from a maintenance standpoint, to try to make it more safe as it exists, is probably something that you can ask staff to look into without you then creating the liability issue that I'm sure they're talking about.
I don't think it's really good to encourage people to walk there, because...
I'm not suggesting that we do.
Well, it sounds like we are. The sides are very steep, especially as you get down towards Newtown Road, or Darby Paoli Road, rather, and people pick up speed as they're going down there, they're going 50 miles an hour, and it's a narrow road, you know, you have no shoulder at all on the road.
Well, the, the intention of the requirement is to make pedestrian mobility improvements, and if the money is being allocated directly towards another location providing pedestrian mobility, I think I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, I just want it to be that the money is directed towards that goal.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
I'm fine with that.
Can we move on to the sightline plan? All right, do you want to take us through that, John, briefly?
I'll let Lisa.
Oh, Linda, thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Thomas from Black &amp; Thomas Panzack, the project landscape architect. So, this plan shows four sightlines from the corner of Newtown Road and Darby Paoli, going through lots 3.5, 3.4, 3.3, and 3.2. And what we've done, that the red line is the sightline, what we've done is highlighted, sort of, I guess I would call like a cone of vision maybe, in a darker color, green, to show you the plant material that would fall within that cone of vision. Everyone recalls that we're looking at the overall landscape plan by way of background as a forest mitigation plan, and providing different type, sizes of trees to mimic a natural reforestation of the property, so that it looks similar to all of the other vegetation on the site, that's the original premise of our landscape plan. What we have added, since we were last here, are some evergreen trees within the planted forest mitigation area. So, each, we've clustered them each in front of the homes in this, what I'll call the cone of vision area, so that there are an interweaving of evergreen trees in front of the homes.
Did you choose that location because it was the worst-case scenario where you can see the most? That corner?
That was what we were instructed to do.
We had brought that up, that we wanted to see.
That, that's where we were asked to take it from. It's the high point in looking into there.
I'm going to disagree that it's the high point, it's you coming down Newtown Road. Can you flip back to the tree page, because I actually wanted to bring up a point? It's, it is certainly one perspective, and it's, and it's a relevant perspective. However, do you see the break between the lots where there's a break in the trees, and again, down near the cul-de-sac? Right, yes, there's a bit of a break in the trees. I live down here, so I drive this every day. My, kind of, the thing that I've been wondering about as I was looking at these sightlines is, as I'm coming down Newtown Road toward Darby Paoli, it's actually quite a bit higher, as we've all talked about, there's, there's a grade to Newtown Road, coming down to the, to the intersection with Darby Paoli. So, I'm a bit concerned that we're going to be able to see all these houses, the tops of them, over these trees, all the way coming down Newtown Road to a fairly, fairly far down Newtown Road, and particularly in these areas where there's breaks in the trees, I kind of wondered, why are there any breaks? Why isn't it just...
We merely didn't color this in, the trees are there, we just highlighted areas, certain areas where the edge of the house was. So, it's not that there aren't trees there, we just didn't darken it in on our plan, we only did this to, so people could see, as I said, the width of the trees in front of, of the houses, specifically where the houses are. So, there are, as you can see, there are trees here, and all the way, all the way across.
They're not evergreens.
There's...
And we've actually clustered the evergreens in front of the houses, so if you were looking across Newtown Road, you will also see these evergreens from this direction.
You will, but we don't, you didn't do any schematics or any lines of sight from Newtown Road, just down from the one...
Just what was previously asked of us.
Okay.
And then on the, the elevation page, I see that you have a red line showing the height of the trees at 20 feet, and then the blue line is 12 feet. Are you putting in trees of two different sizes, or are we saying that over a certain amount of time, they're going to be getting to the...
Yeah, how about if I walk everybody through this?
Go ahead.
Okay, so at the top, we've got lot 3.5, and we go down to 3.2, so it's, as you're moving across the site. The green line at the bottom is the topography, and over at the far end is the viewpoint. We are showing a blue line to show the height of the trees at installation, and it shows, in this area, typically, that's the deciduous trees, and then we're showing a sample evergreen tree at, at 10 feet tall. The red line is showing it at 20 feet tall for the deciduous trees and the evergreen tree. So, the blue line for the deciduous trees is at 12 feet, the blue for the evergreen tree is at 10, and then the red is at 20 for both trees. We also are showing where the cartway is on each one, we're showing where the frontyard setback is, and then we're showing the building envelope, which is where it cuts through the lot, and then, still working on 3.5 here, the dark, solid lines is the location of the home on the lot, as you can see it on the, the plan, and you can see each house as they relate to where the trees are, as you work your way down, the sections. John had previously said that there was a recommendation to move the houses back and to have a 60-foot front yard, and so what we're showing is that labeled, and then the house is dashed to show you where the location of the house might be, that a 60-foot setback. Lot 3.2 is the lot John had previously discussed where you actually are going uphill a little bit, and that's the lot that will be following the conditional use requirement to have the Board of Commissioners approve that house on that lot specifically.
Questions?
So, basically, from, from that intersection, you're going to see the roots of these houses at just about any time of the year.
Say that again, please?
Just about any time of the year, you're going to, and, and when the trees are all full grown at 20 feet or better, you're still going to see the...
Well, the full grown is, is, the trees will be initially planted and before these houses are built, and there will be time for them to grow, so what we're doing is showing them about 10 years later in the red line, and that's still not full grown. Ultimately, these trees could get 50, 60 feet tall, so we're, we're just showing 10 years out for you.
All right.
Since of all people, you are in a position to answer this question, couldn't the applicant plant bigger trees to start?
I would look to the applicant to do that, to respond to that. Yes, it's possible.
From the initial plan, they were increased to 10, 10 to 12 feet, I believe is what they're shown, right? Or eight to 10?
Yeah, they're shown at eight to 10, they were previously six to eight. So, we have increased.
It didn't, it didn't apparently fully solve the problem, and even at 10 years out, it's not quite solving the problem.
Well, that assumes that the problem is that you can see anything of a house, and there never was the requirement or the belief that these houses would never be seen. That wasn't the premise of it, that there would be screening for them, but not something that was, I mean, at one point, we came in with a wall of evergreens, and we're told that that wasn't what the township was looking for. So, the answer is, we came back, we increased the size of the trees by two feet, they're going in, in phase one, and this is phase three, so that there will be growing, and over time, you, they should pretty much block it, but just like you would, I mean, we heard from the neighbors on Newtown Road that they see the houses on the far side of Arderson across the way, you'll still see, I mean, you'll still see some of them, I mean, we're talking 1,200 feet from, from that corner to, to this, we're talking four football fields away.
Julia, may I ask staff a couple of questions? Peter, by any chance, do you have a copy of the conditional use with you? Oh, I just wanted to read some wording about it, and then Steve?
It's attached to the...
I thought those are the, I thought that was the preliminary plan conditions, I wanted to read the conditional use. Mr. Nocini, do you happen to know how tall the trees are that were installed at Atterbury? I remarked last month that they're very nice, substantial trees in Atterbury.
I, I do not know the height, but the developer did come back in after Shade Tree approval, Shade Tree Commission approval, and asked to install some larger trees in lieu of the required two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees, but I don't know their height offhand.
You see them, though, they're, they're substantial trees.
Yes.
Is the, in our packet, do you know if this is the preliminary plan requirements or the conditional use wording? That, that's kind of my question, Peter.
What wording are you talking about?
Number nine, I just didn't know if there was further wording regarding these lots and the screening of them in the conditional use.
This is the preliminary plan requirement.
Yeah, I do believe it's the preliminary plan.
Right, so I was just curious if anybody has the conditional use...
I think, I think Roger's looking for it, he says he has it, I'm still looking.
Actually, Leslie, I just wanted to glance at it quickly, thank you. Well, while you're doing that, we also received the reforestation plan with this packet, and I know there's a letter from Mr. Gabriel, specifically regarding that plan. I don't remember, do we normally get those plans, or this is a unique circumstance? I'm just asking, I don't remember looking at a forest mitigation plan before, have we been doing that, or is it because of this specific site requires?
Typically, we don't see forestation plans on our normal SALDO reviews.
That was just provided as extra information to the board, this was before Shade Tree and has moved forward.
It's been there, okay.
And if you, if you follow your density modification ordinance, the approval of that buffer plan is under your ordinance, the Board of Commissioners. So, that's why it comes through you to recommend to them, but we've also been to Shade Tree, who has recommended approval.
So, the conditional use decision regarding these lots is that they should be done in a fashion which provides for maximum protection of Darby Paoli Newtown Road View Shed, and that the buffering should be sufficient to screen these lots. So, the wording in the actual conditional use decision is a little stronger than the number nine of the preliminary plan, and just from my way of thinking, that we can still see all four roof lines, for me, is not sufficient, and it sure as heck isn't maximum protection. So, if 20-foot trees aren't doing it, and you said you made them two feet taller, I would say, go back and find some taller trees. I mean, I do know that you got the feedback already that we don't want just, just, you know, evergreens there, but, you know, that, this is what the conditional use says, is maximum protection, and we can see the house, the, the, the top of all four of these houses.
Well, I think you can make that comment to the board, I think it's up to the board to approve the buffer plan, I think they did it at a preliminary plan stage because they specifically referenced the plan, but, I mean, if you want us to have that further discussion with the board, make that, make that recommendation.
I guess, Peter, the other, or Roger, the other question I have about this is that within our grading permits, we can add grading of up to eight feet, I believe, can they remove grading and lower the, the grading in this area so that that also works to minimize the view of these houses? I mean, is that allowed?
If, if they so choose, yes.
Okay. Are there other issues we want to discuss that are not related to the traffic of the roads?
The hydrants, I wanted to see the placement of the fire hydrants.
Oh, can we see the hydrants, please?
And I wanted to look again at a couple of those intersections that...
But that's roads.
Oh, roads, right.
While, while you're looking at the hydrants, I'll, I'll add that they're subject to final approval of, of Ray Daly and the fire marshal, and I don't know that they've been signed off 100% yet as to their locations.
I just wonder whether proposed at this point.
We have them, they're inlaid into the plans, they're set so that no single building is less than four, or 600 feet away from the fire hydrant. With this scale, it's difficult to show them, but they are shown on the plans, in the 50-scale plans, and if you wish, I could go through every one of them, but they're located to meet all the requirements, that they be at least within 600 feet of, of any building.
Okay, all right, no, that's, I mean, so that's within 600 feet of every dwelling...
Yes.
There's a fire hydrant.
Yes.
Okay, though, that's sufficient for me, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, can we move on to the traffic issues and the road issues? Amy, do you want to take us through your letter first, and then we can go back to the things that...
I believe that some of these items were discussed as we went along, so I don't know if there's any that you need some specific discussion about, or if you want to move down to any...
Well, for instance, what do you think about the applicant's change to not having a cul-de-sac on Road D, but rather widening the road there?
I'd have to see what it would entail as far as turning movements, the whole idea behind having that cul-de-sac is to allow for the turnaround without a vehicle having to do a three-point turn, but I believe that on a 30-foot width, you would probably have to do a, a three-point turn. So, and, and...
Yeah, the design was to do a three-point turn.
Okay, well, you know, these are SALDO comments, and what that means is that he would be required to put them in and request waivers, is, is our reasoning for bringing them up. up. So if he can't comply with it, or chooses not to.
But isn't that unusual to have a widening of a road rather than a cul-de-sac in order to provide a turnaround?
It is.
This was initially intended to be a three-lot private driveway. The only reason that it is not is this existing building on the other side that puts a fourth lot on private driveways. I mean, if we had asked for that waiver, that there wouldn't even be the widening. There would just be the, but we believe that it was better to provide it public back to at least the, those houses. I mean, we don't have a problem which way, but for example, here and here, we have similar situations. It's just that the one existing house, which is actually the garage here that's going to get renovated, couldn't be taken the other way, or you wouldn't want to take it out through that open space area to that other road. So, I mean, putting in a cul-de-sac for that, under those circumstances, just seemed like a lot of paving for not much.
So why are you not widening the end of all of those driveways, those private driveways then? Why just that one? Because of the fourth house?
Yeah, because it's a requirement that there be a turnaround on those others. The others are shared driveways. They, none of them have turnarounds. I mean, when you share a driveway, you go in and somebody goes off, and then you go up and the other person goes off, and the last guy has his own. I mean, that's the way it would normally be, and that's what it is in the other, other two areas. That's the way it would have been if there was a way to service that existing garage.
Whether it's required or not, it's just, they're all examples of poor planning, you know? These are the examples of what they show you what not to do when you're planning a new development. So I don't know why we wouldn't want to continue to ask for that cul-de-sac where we can require it. I don't know why we, I don't understand the benefit.
Well, I was trying to ask maybe Amy and Roger that question, because the benefit is not having extra pavement if you don't need it, if it really is just a driveway.
That pavement's going to end up somewhere else with wider driveways so they can find a way to park on them, because there's no parking. The pavement's going to come. There's.
The pavement for the shared driveways is less than the, than that road. That road is coming in at 20 feet in width.
But where are people going to park? Where are people going to, they're going to end up creating larger driveways to compensate for the fact that there's no on-street parking. It's difficult to turn around. There's no place for a guest to park.
You're not going to park in a cul-de-sac. I mean, that's not providing you more parking area. The wider driveway, the 30-foot wide area is going to provide, that's lengthwise, is going to provide you more place where somebody is going to park. I don't think parking is the issue with the cul-de-sac or not the cul-de-sac. I think it's the question of whether you turn around with a three-point turn, or whether you swing around. And with the, you know, that being four houses, and back at that turnaround being two houses, it just seemed like a, I mean, we're going to take down trees, we're going to have to grade wider. It just didn't seem to be the type of thing that fit into the property. If y'all want to recommend that we have the cul-de-sac, that's your prerogative. I mean, we'll discuss it, and if that's what we have to do, we'll do. But it just seemed like a lesser option for that area, given what, the small amount of usage that that's going to get with two houses back there.
All right, we'll think about that, but let's keep going. Kathy, you want to talk about that intersection issue that you had now?
Yeah. If I could just mention one other little thing, it's a quickie that I missed. All right, on, I believe it was Ray's letter. Roger, okay. Number 7, applicant shall preserve the existing stone water tower if feasible. My question is, who determines feasible?
We're certainly going to maintain that if it is structurally sound. I mean, we want that, that's a feature of the property. It's at one of our entrances. We have no desire to take that down. We don't own it. We haven't been able to analyze it yet. We believe that the stone is fine, and that what might be needed is a new roof, but we'll have to, we'll have to look at it. So it was just simply, we couldn't promise in a vacuum that it was feasible, but we can tell you that it is our intent to keep it.
Whoever owns it, they've not allowed you access to it? And if you don't know who owns it, how are you subdividing it?
No, no, it's owned by the trusts.
Okay.
Okay?
So.
To get in there and to analyze it and spend money on it and so forth is something that we'd have to go ask the trust to let us do. And right now, you know, our belief is it's going to stay. We have no reason to believe it's not. It's just when somebody says, will you keep this? The answer is, yeah, if we can, we will. And that's, that's the answer.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned that all of a sudden, it's expensive to make whole, or whatever you want.
Probably more expensive to take down than it is to fix the roof.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, my intersection issues. Abrams and Newtown. I have some questions.
A plan that shows that better, so we can look at it while Kathy's talking?
Yeah, we have the 50 scale of that, don't we? What sheet does that do on? Yeah. Yeah. Right here. 20.
All right. You have to take some walls down to make it wider, obviously.
That's correct.
The setback from that road to that little house on the corner is very narrow.
That's correct.
How close is that road going to get to that house?
We are trying to hold that side of the road. We have to widen it. Pendott has told us they want it, even though that road will be 18 feet when we get in with no parking. Pendott wants it at 24 feet at the intersection and 50 feet back.
And I was looking at that today, because there was a truck parked in the middle of that road, was, when I was coming down Abrams, and it pretty much filled up the roadway. And I was wondering how you're going to handle that with that house there. You centered the other side of the road on the current Abrams that's there.
Well, if you, if you stand on our side and look at Abrams, actually, the left hand.
Can we zoom in on that? Sorry, go ahead.
Where my pointer is, is where she wants to zoom in. Okay, so I'm going to have to, oops, try and get it for you.
Almost.
Okay. Now, what, if, in fact, if you look at it, this road actually centers on the right half of Abrams Lane.
Okay.
So our right lane lines up with what's the right lane of Abrams, and our narrowness is on the left side. So when we expand to the left side, we will be then matching up better with Abrams, although we will be wider than Abrams, because Abrams isn't 24 feet.
I don't think it's even 20, well, maybe it is at the intersection, but the road itself is not.
No, right here, we measured 16 feet right there.
Yeah, I know, it's big. Now, you show a, a buffer going through the house and the garage and all there. I assume you're not really doing that, that gray, I believe?
Oh, no, that buffer is just a, the 20-foot area. We don't, we don't plan, we're not going to take the building down or anything to plan buffer there. No, that's, that house is going to remain, and we're trying to hold the right-hand side of our road as best as possible so that we save that. I mean, we don't change anything there.
All right.
The wall, there's a curve in the wall, and then there's a post. We're probably going to end up taking it to the post. On the other side, we'll have to go further than the post, because it had the widening that has to be 24 feet.
Now, the traffic is pretty big, because coming down Newtown Road, they pick up a lot of speed. Visibility is not good. I'm sure the visibility on your side of the road is better than what is on the other side.
It is.
But we need some sort of traffic control there. What can be done? Amy, can a stop sign be put in?
Where are you looking for a stop sign?
Abrams and Newtown.
Abrams and Newtown.
You want to stop control Newtown?
Yes.
And your reason is?
It's hard to get out, and there's going to be more traffic. And traffic is increasing all the time there, because it's a cut-through to Episcopal and the other developments that are going on in other townships.
I was, I was by there today, and I was looking at the traffic volumes and the information that was in the traffic impact study, and the pulled crash records from Pendott and from Radnor Township Police Department. And I'm not seeing, we typically look at warrants for an always-stop control like what you're asking here. I don't believe that the warrants were run for that intersection. That is something that could be looked into. It's unlikely that it would qualify as an always-stop control. It looked to me that you had adequate site distance when I was there looking.
Not from the Abrams side, you don't? You have to almost pull out a bit.
There's some trimming, well, there's some shrubs there that could be trimmed back to provide better view sightlines.
Well, I hate to take, force a big tree to come out for it, but it seems that a stop sign would serve a couple things. It would slow people down coming down there.
Well, we typically don't install stop signs to slow down vehicles. We use them to help out with site distance. Again, this is a state road.
Well, that's the second part of it, that gives you a shot to get across the road.
Okay. Right now, I know that the study is showing that the level of service coming out of Abrams, although it's, you know, 18 seconds is the average delay, is what they're talking. When you come up to that stop sign, that would be the average amount of time a person would wait to get their gap, just based on the traffic volumes that are occurring now. It may be a little bit more sometime and a little bit less during the peak hour. It's also a state road, so Pendott would have to weigh in on that, whether or not they would allow that always-stop.
Okay. Now, how about, I'm sorry, go ahead, was there anything else?
That's all I was going to say.
If, when this development is finished, can, and it gets worse, can we come back to the township and say, okay, can we look at this stop sign thing again?
You can certainly always come back to the township when you have concerns about site distance issues, stop control. And Steve is very good at looking at the information and then passing it on to.
All right. Because a stop sign shouldn't be that expensive to put a few signs in.
Well, we don't just install the stop sign. There's studies that go along with that. We look at the traffic volumes, we look at the crash records, there's some forms that we need to fill out.
No, I'm talking about expense to ask the developer to help out.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Except a warning at the top of Newtown Road that there is a stop sign down there would probably be good.
You could request a six-month post-construction analysis to determine whether or not it meets the warrants for stop control. And then there could be escrow set aside for that analysis and for the eventual always-stop control if it was deemed acceptable to Pendott.
What is going to happen with control at Newtown and Darby-Paoli?
I believe that we had discussions about.
It's going to become an always-stop.
Okay.
Based on our discussions with Pendott, that'll be an all-way.
And not a light?
No.
No, it should, it actually should operate overall for the intersection a little bit more efficiently than it does right now, although some approaches are going to have a little bit more delay, while others will be better served by having the always-stop.
Okay. How's the rest of the board feel about that?
Well, I think we could get rid of that stop taking the right onto Newtown, but that's me. We lived with it for lots and lots of years on that one.
But it is a difficult intersection already, only because you really have to be very familiar with it to get through there safely. And I think, especially people who don't live around here, struggle with that intersection, realizing when they have the right of way to go, so.
How do you envision, I'm sure the sightlines are okay. If you're traveling east on Darby-Paoli, and you have, you know, you have the straight through, that it's going to be hard to get people to stop. That is a, we, that's going to be a challenge.
Yeah, there's, there's signs that we put out for six months prior to. Steve's familiar with them, because he's done this for other areas, but, and then we typically put out a flashing beacon on top of the sign for approximately six months just to alert motorists to what's going on in the area.
Anything else, Kathy, on that? Okay.
My one question about the post-construction study. This is going to have like four phases. Does that mean four studies? Or would you recommend a different spot?
Well, typically, what happens is those that drive by it would contact the township and say, we think there's a problem with this area, or the police will be aware of situations, maybe there's some more crash incidents in the area, and that would call attention to it prior to complete construction. So it could be just something that, once it's entirely constructed, you could look at, or if conditions change prior to that, you could look at it and make an analysis and determine whether or not it should be signalized or always-stop controlled.
Neither Phase 5 nor Phase 3 would utilize that intersection.
I just thought of one other thing. On your entrance there on Abrams Lane going into your property, are you going to be having post lights or anything like that? Because it's in, at night, you can't see that intersection at all, and you're going to have more people pulling in there. It would be good if you could put post lights there or something to indicate to people
The one, you're saying the one at Abrams?
Yes.
Eddie, do you have any comment on that?
Or little street lights?
We'll, we'll look at it.
Okay.
We don't have anything planned at this time, but we'll look at that. We understand what you're saying.
Try driving down there in the dark, with your lights on, of course, and looking for that if you're not real familiar with it, so that you can make a left-hand turn, or a right-hand turn for that matter.
Okay, Amy, did you have, I'm sorry, did you have other issues either from your letter, or that you wanted to point out generally about traffic or road circulation items? I mean, that you specifically wanted to draw our attention to?
Can we look at the one intersection that she mentioned? That I wanted to look at as well?
Okay.
Can you pull up Sheet 9? It's the aerial photograph, at least on my April plans.
Not sure we have it with us. We don't have Sheet 9.
I have it. I actually. No, the aerial photograph is helpful. If I could give you my sheet.
Sure.
No, just put yours up, Sue.
The reason I want to look at it is there's one intersection that Amy mentioned. She would like to see it at a 90-degree angle, and the applicant mentioned that the trees are an impediment. And the aerial photograph, it doesn't seem to be so much of an impediment on this one particular one. If you zoom in.
Could you zoom in on that spot, please?
On.
Well, John will have to point to it.
It's the, to the right of the, of the main, of the main house, yes. Nope, to the right of that, yes. That intersection is, if you zoom in, I just don't see where the trees are that big of an impediment to doing the.
Straightening.
The straightening that Amy mentioned would be preferred in that area, and that you asked a waiver for. I just, I just don't see a stand of trees there that's an issue.
Well, you have, I'm sorry, let me, Dave, if you want to come and join in as well. You're going to then take it back in here as opposed to it being a straight shot down, from a site distance standpoint, down that line as well?
I think my, my comment is this. Our traffic engineer mentioned that intersection is an issue. You mentioned that the trees are an impediment. I just don't see where the trees are an impediment to doing it in the fashion that our staff recommends is appropriate there. That's what I'm trying to say.
I think she's, and Amy, you can tell me if I'm wrong. I don't think she said there's anything unsafe about it. She said that it is a, it's not the 90 degrees that the ordinance requires, so it would need a waiver, is what I understand. need a waiver, is what I understood her to say. I don't know whether you.
I, yeah, I'm sorry. Maybe you can clarify.
No, I was, my reason for bringing up it's to point it out that it's, it requires a waiver.
So it's not that you have an issue with the intersection per se?
You know, on a higher traffic volume road, I would have an issue with it, but when we're talking internal roadways such as this, it, I don't think it's as problematic.
Okay. So the roads that you mentioned were not so much to tell us that you thought they needed correction, but rather that the applicant needs to provide, needs to add them to the list of waivers?
Yes, that would be correct.
Were any of these intersections ones that you felt needed correcting that a waiver would not be appropriate?
The Newtown Road comment would defer to PennDOT.
Okay.
And no, I don't think there would be any other problems.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
What is the grade going into that intersection, coming from the bottom? Yeah, coming, coming up towards the curve. Everything's flat there?
Everything's flat there.
Looking at the, the intersection that goes right by the, by the mansion there. You say that there's a, right there, there's a stone bridge or something you don't want to mess with. Somebody's coming in that one-way road and has to turn off to the right to go out towards on the left side of the screen.
Because he doesn't want to.
Yeah, that. They're still going to have to make.
They're, they're still going to make that turn, although that person is probably going to come that way. And let's, let's go back to.
Doug, if we can go to the grading plan. Our constriction to this point is the old stone bridge. We are widening the opening at that point so that we are, if you can follow my pencil line here, this is the line, the dash line is the line of the current paved area.
All right.
We're providing a wider radius here, so we are widening once we get beyond the bridge.
The pavement.
To allow, to make that turn easier. So we're not, the driveway's not being left as it is in today's condition. We are widening that there to provide the cartway and the turning radius through there.
All right. That makes sense. I just wasn't clear.
Okay.
You know, I had one question for Roger that's a very generic one. Roger, in your letter, where you speak of the post-construction stormwater management, you mentioned several inconsistencies. Do you have sufficient information from the applicant that you're satisfied that these drainage calculations are correct now or that they will be?
They will be. There was nothing in our review that, that couldn't be corrected. There was some, some differing numbers in some of the drainage reports that were done that, I've spoken with the applicant's engineer and, and I'm comfortable that they'll be able to address my comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to throw this out to Amy and Roger and also Steve, Mr. Gabriel. You know, we've been through these memos and we've been talking here, but I want to give you one more chance to just let us draw our attention to anything you think we've overlooked from anything that you want covered. Are we good? Great. And Mr. Schneider.
Yeah.
The original, the highlighted plan that you, with you spoke of at the beginning of the meeting, did we cover all those areas?
Yes, we did.
Great. I want to go to public comment then, if that's okay with everybody? Thank you.
Sarah Pilling from Garrett Hill. It may be whipping a dead horse, but Bentley was made to put in a sidewalk, which incidentally is not ADA compliant, because when they put in the telephone pole, it's then not wide enough for a wheelchair to go through. Atterbury didn't give a lot of pushback, but they were told that there had to be a sidewalk and they agreed to put the sidewalk on the property because to take away the bank and the fence didn't make sense. I think you're being too nice. I think there should be a very narrow path, ADA compliant, that is inside the wall so that people can move. They're going to be in the rye field. I assume people are going to be allowed to walk in the rye field. And I, the whole plan was eventually to go from the willows to the trail, if the trail ever came down through Eithon. And I think, I know there are four votes with the commissioners, but I'm, as a person, I'm not willing to say, oh, well, I think there's got to be a way to do it. A narrow path inside the wall isn't really going to bother anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have a question. If there were a narrow path inside the wall, it would no longer need to be ADA compliant because it's no longer within the PennDOT right-of-way at that point, right?
But I believe in that case, it would be located on private property. So I don't know that the public would have access to it.
Well, I think if we asked for a trail, we'd ask for the right-of-way or the easement, whatever it needed for the public to have access.
Then it would need to be compliant.
Was the Atterbury property inside the right-of-way, but on top of the bank? I don't remember. That's what I thought.
State your name.
Good evening. Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road. This may be my last meeting with you all. And maybe we are moving towards the right direction with the buffer strip. I'm going to key in on that as I have in the last, I guess, six months. I did attend the Shade Tree Commission. They did vote for this. The history behind that vote was they were stunned that they were not told until that last meeting that trees were even being removed and that the number at that meeting, which was, I think, last week, and I might be wrong by one or two, was 209 trees. And so they spent a lot of time talking about, well, you didn't tell us that all these trees were being removed. And they were a little stunned, is how I would categorize it. I'll leave that as that. My comments tonight are as followed. This is not a buffering plan and is not a reforestation plan. And I myself am a little confused, even though I think I've attended 99% of these meetings on Adrosin. In terms of buffering, you have now, I think, 228 trees planted on this one. When we first came, I think it was 128. So there's been about 100 added. There's been, what we were told last week at Shade Tree, 26 or 28 conifers, of fairly small caliber conifers, to tell you the truth. And they are bunched down in those four lots, though the decision, Susan, on the conditional use, I think, protected all the lots. They didn't just say these four lots. And so my confusion before my numbered comments are, is this reforestation or is it buffering? Because if we look at the 228, and I may be wrong by a few trees that are now here, that approaches about 20 cents on the dollar to a buffering strip that you see in your township that you might have agreed on in a density modification plan over the last 20-some years when Radnor Township was doing density modification. For instance, I think there's one called the Ellis Track, but it's called something else. And that's about 82 acres. And the guy was made to put 900 trees. 82 acres, 900 trees. This is 311, and I think they're taking 209 out and it's 400 and change being put in. I'm just giving that, everything is different, but we've moved back. So this looks like the amount of trees you would put on a 25-foot buffering strip, not 100-foot buffering strip. And it doesn't look like what they're doing as what we are calling reforestation. In the executive letter from Elaine Paul Schaefer, our chairman of Board of Commissioners, to all the taxpayers, that's online, on page three, the reforestation that's going to be done across the street on parcel A will include the Wheeler Track, 26 acres, 1,500 trees planted every 10 feet. So we have 200 and change on as long a strip, 1,500 trees on the Wheeler, which already has a lot of trees, every 10 feet. I, I'm just very confused. This isn't reforestation, obviously, and it's not buffering. So I'm losing, I may be losing you all, but I'm losing myself in the details too, because it doesn't make sense to me that we've had to inch by inch get to just 228 trees. I'm with Susan. I don't think that it does what Bill Bola, the hearing officer, asked for us. It was for our view shed, because the taxpayers are putting up $11.6 million, the view shed of Darby Peoli to Newtown Road. He says that in his statements, from the view. This is beautiful. I don't question that. I think it's a little too sparse in conifer, but I think it's beautiful and Lisa did a very nice job. However, it serves a beautiful, from the housing, houses up here, but not from our perspective, the commuter shed, as I used to call it, or the hiker shed, as it may become. But it doesn't really do the job. And I'm hoping that we get closer to the either 1,500 trees or the, the last time I was in front of you, I did the math equation, I, I had a board, and in Pennsylvania Municipal Code, the borders that they show would equate to about 1170, I think I came up with, guessing that this was maybe, you know, 400 yards, 500 yards. I don't know what the yardage is here, but you guys could figure that out. So I think there's more work to be done. I appreciate the chance to continue the dialogue. I do appreciate the applicant that they're moving inch by inch towards a view shed that's protected for the taxpayers and that our money will be well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
My name is Colleen Price. I apologize I'm late, but I actually didn't even know this was on the list because it's not, it's not say Adrosin. It says ES III and 807 Newtown. So I kind of threw everybody for a loop, and I just got an email from my neighbor. So I apologize. I, I just walked in at the end of the meeting if I'm going over something that you already did. And I love your hairdo, Julia. It looks awesome.
Thank you, Colleen.
Really, really like it. I was just following up on what she.
Because that's what's really important here.
It's really good. I need a new hairdo. On the buffering, it does seem like it's a little sparse and I think the whole idea is we don't want reforestation. The whole idea was buffering. I don't know if you listened to the Board of Commissioners meeting, they're getting about $3 million worth of waivers on not doing the road whiffs and a lot of other things. So they certainly have enough funds to do the couple of things we want, which is the buffering and the sidewalk, whether it's inside or outside, however you can do it. And the one last thing that the neighbors have an issue with is moving that one street that's coming right into the Dubers House at Hawthorne. I think we had talked about it before and most people agreed to move it down. It's a little bit of a jog on the road. They already have a path for it, for an emergency route. If you could just make that traffic go out, it would really help my neighbors across the street at Hawthorne. And one final thing, and I really don't know what I'm supposed to do about it, but a lot of people in my neighborhood are saying this is historic ground, that there's a lot of Indian artifacts there, that Washington's troops were encamped right there. There's a big monument to that effect. What do you do if you find out later that this is really land that should be historically preserved? I mean, is there some sort of condition if when they start digging, they find something? I don't know what to do in terms of follow-up. They're asking me to do something now. I don't know what to do in terms of getting anything done.
Maybe we could ask staff that question. If a construction project is underway and something is found that may be of historical value, what's the process for that?
At that point, the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission would get involved. You would have to report that if you found some, some artifacts. And then they would decide whether they would go to a higher level phase of, of like an ecological dig or something like that to see, see what else was there. They, they would determine that, the PHMC.
The PHMC.
Okay. That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other public comment? Thank you all very much. Okay. Additional board comment? Who has questions or concerns?
I'm glad that Leslie brought up the tree question because we have this reforestation, the forest mitigation plan. We're on the legend, it, it has on the legend, trees to be removed. But for the life of me, I don't see on here where the trees are being removed. So I wanted to ask the applicant if this plan indicated it. Because I, it's in the legend, which would indicate to me that it would show the trees to be removed.
Is that the full set?
This one.
They're on, they're Xed out. I can give you a synopsis as to where they are, right?
I don't. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, if you could come up.
So as I go page by page through.
So how about if I show you overall where they're being removed on that big plant? Is that helpful? Yes, thank you.
Correct. And I'm going to ask Dave to remind me if I miss any areas. So on, along Newtown Road, this entry, there'll be some trees being removed.
Okay, so hang on a second. So I'm going to turn to that, on this, that's, that's done by page C.
It's probably D or C.
C and D. So on my plans, I don't see those trees indicated on here.
I have them on my green one.
No, those are showing their.
Are they the little ones?
Let me just say that on the legend, the symbol for proposed evergreen trees and trees to be removed are very similar.
There are Xs through the trees being removed.
Yeah, I'm not.
So it could be that the plane is so small that you can't see them, but there are Xs.
Yeah. I'm really not seeing them on this plan.
You're on what, what number?
C. What?
LP.
LP 1C.
To the board, to the chair, to the planning commission. So your second set of plans were given to you on flash drive. So if you're looking at the previous submission, based on what the applicant said, you would not see the Xed out trees.
What date is the plan?
I'm looking at the forest mitigation plan that we just received in the last week or so. I, I don't see the date on the page. September 17th revised.
Yeah, I'm looking at September 17.
My point why I'm saying this is this.
Okay.
Is that I see the number on the front page, I see the number of trees to be replaced. And I see the calculations. What I don't see anywhere on these plans are the number of trees coming out. It was information that I didn't have till Mrs. Morgan made it in public comment, and it's very difficult to see it on these plans.
Okay. Look on LP 1E, just by way of example.
Okay. All right.
So right here, oh, I'm sorry. That is a list.
Can you talk into the mic, please? That is a list of the trees being removed.
Okay, but where are they on the plan with the X through them?
Some right here.
Okay.
It takes a while to focus in where the X is. So this is an area where the tree's being removed. There's some right here.
And what would be the reason for removing trees in an area where you're not doing construction?
Say that, ask me, I'm sorry.
What would be the reason for removing trees in an area where you are not doing construction?
We're only removing where we are doing construction.
So behind lot 33, where I see trees being removed, what construction is taking?
It's a sewer line.
Excuse me?
It's a sewer line.
Okay. And along the match line, something else is happening over there?
Stormwater management area. I was going to point that all out to you on the overall plan.
All right. And so is her number accurate? 211 trees are coming out?
Yes.
Is that an accurate number?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, thank you, John, because what I was going to show you. We lost the point? We lost the word? Okay, okay. In this area here, whoops, I'm sorry.
Move the table.
In this area here, we're going to flip the cul-de-sac over and we'll be saving more trees there. Okay? So, so that's one example of what we're doing to mitigate the tree removal. So in general, the trees are being removed for stormwater management, for utility lines, and for roads and entries.
I have a question. Sorry. When you showed the example with the red line, blue line, the view shed thing on the buffer, you said that the, I think it's the red line is 10 years from now.
I, I believe that's 10 years, yeah.
Okay. In terms of the look-down view, the green page that is, we've been looking at?
The plan view, yes. That's more of a, the circles you're looking at, the width, the circles, that's more of a mid-life span. span. I think the two to two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees, I'd have to get it out, is about 30 feet spread.
One of the public comments was that in another part of the property, the trees would be 10 feet apart. How would you estimate for us how far apart the deciduous trees are, for example, on average? I mean, looking at the scale, it looks like 25 to 50 feet.
Okay, I think I got it.
So looking at the scale, it seems to be like 25, 50, maybe more here and there.
So what's different, I believe, about this plan than the one that was previously spoken about, I'm making a wild guess, is we're showing a variety of different sizes. A lot of times when you do a reforestation plan of that amount of trees, you're putting in very small trees, like four feet. So that's what's different about this forest mitigation plan is we're providing a variety of different sizes instead of one size. And this plan was crafted with the input of the township arborist, just to remind everybody that when I met with the arborist, this is what he suggested that we pursue, and we like it. It seemed that when we previously had the wall of evergreens, that wasn't well-received, so we went to this situation so that we could mimic the existing hedgerows and forest lands on the site.
Julie, I have a suggestion that might help us cut to the chase about the four lots that are a concern.
What?
Are you done with your tree question?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I have to agree. I think that the number of trees going in is pretty paltry compared to the number going out, but the bigger thing is that with regard to the condition for these four houses, if at the end of the day, our concern is that the condition that was set forth by Mr. Bowler is that we don't see the houses, then I would think that we could put in wording that a combination of the placement of the houses, which the Board of Commissioners already want purview over, as well as the final grading for those four houses, will be determined when they go to build these houses. Because at the end, you know, this is in Phase Three, they're going to build, put the trees in now. They'll put in smaller trees, and they'll take longer to grow, and they'll have to do more grading, or they'll put in more substantial trees that will grow, and there'll be more screening, and they'll have to do less grading. It's a choice that they're going to make as they go forward here. But what the township wants, what the taxpayers want, is control over whether or not we see these houses.
Okay. It was never said, or realistic to think, you're not going to ever see parts of these houses. We always knew and spoke about that we would see the roofs of these houses. I think the houses personally should not be there.
Well, yeah, that's-
But, you know, we've made that argument, and we've been moving on from there.
Right.
I still feel that way, but I don't want to give the impression that we're saying, well, you've agreed that we won't see these houses, because that never happened.
That's not the wording that I said, but the maximum, you know, maximum screening is what Mr. Bowler put in as wording, and to see all four. I'm just saying, I think that there's a wording we can do, the combination of the placement of the house and the final grading to be determined when these houses are built, gives the applicant the opportunity to put in more substantial trees that will grow, that by the time he's building these houses, you know, there'll be less grading work potentially to have to do. That was my thought about that.
Thank you, yeah. Does anyone have anything else for Lisa?
Well, my last comment, sort of to the applicant more, though, and I'll get back to the trees. This is only four of 72 houses. I mean, why can't we address that with taller, bigger trees right away?
We have a significant number of trees here. They're going to grow over the period of time for the phasing of the property.
The initial deciduous trees are going in at 12 feet?
They're two to two-and-a-half-inch caliper. They start at 12 to 14. I picked 12 as the number because it's the lower number, so they could be 14, and then they'll grow about eight feet.
And they're about 20 feet apart or more, even the close ones are 20 feet apart.
Yeah, we have lots of room here.
Why? Why is the township planting 1,500 trees, and we're going to keep doing this? Why are we stuck on this, I guess?
This is-
For one thing, if I can just throw in, I think part of it is that in that area, the township wants to create a forest.
Yes.
That's not what we're trying to create here. And you have to give the room, these trees have planting widths that are standard, and it's usually 30 to 40 feet. Some of them, if you want a more naturalistic look, they won't be exactly 30 or 40 feet, you mix it up. But 10 feet isn't really going to work.
Well, I just feel like it's not as if I'm saying you can't put the houses there. The houses are there, they're designed there. I think these profiles show me that it's insufficient. I think that's the outcome of these profiles, is that the screening is not adequate. It's not to the maximum degree. And screening, to me, means you can barely see it. And if you look at these profiles, there's no barely. It's in plain view for 10 years minimum. So we're showing a 10-year line that is unacceptable if you're considering it maximum screening. I just don't think the size of what's going in is what was intended in the conditional use, the condition that was placed on this plan. I disagree with it. I don't know what your definition of screening is, but to me, when you screen something, you can't see it in plain view from all angles.
Well, Julia, why don't we just, we'll just vote on this, right?
Yeah, I mean- No, what we're going to do is, we're having a session, we're not going to continue having back and forth with the applicant. This is their proposal, they've had their say, but we need to talk amongst ourselves and say, well, what are we going to say? You know, do we want to say, we can say what we want in our motion.
That's my sentiment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that was what I was going to say. I mean, make your recommendation. The decision is by the board. Right now, we have an approved planning plan. You can recommend that the board modify it if they want.
All right. Thank you.
Do I have a question? How many trees are already planted along, or is all of that stuff new?
That's all new.
That's all new, except down at this end, you can see existing, some existing trees. They're the ones with the dotted circles.
Thank you.
Let's talk about what we want in our motion. And then Steve is going to valiantly write down what we say. I'm sorry, Skip. You could both write it down. Well, let's start where we were, with the houses. My personal point of view is that those houses should not be there. I think that this is such an important asset for the township, and this property could have absorbed those houses somewhere else. And by putting those houses there and putting in this buffer, we are changing the view shed significantly from both Newtown Road and Darby Paley Road, and even though we would, with this buffer, which has improved greatly since it started, even though we would be mitigating that impact, we're still creating a place where, a situation where we are undermining the very thing we're trying to preserve. That's my point of view. Who else has it?
So you're going to then suggest that the houses not be put there?
So my suggestion would be that, among other items that we have in our, when we make our motion, that we do not recommend approval of this plan because of that.
Are we going to offer an alternative to-
I mean, would you like to?
No, I'm saying, if you just say the houses shouldn't be there, I don't think that will get traction.
I think that we've already got preliminary plan approval-
Yes, we do.
-for the location of those houses. So I think that that ship has sailed. I think even with the planting plan, maybe that has already been approved. I'm not quite certain. However, we can always recommend increasing the caliper of those trees in order to prevent full view of the houses. And I would point to these profiles as evidence that the size of the trees being proposed is insufficient to meet the intention of the condition in the conditional use.
Do you want to just see who agrees with that? Because you do.
I have my marketing statement, so to speak, for what I think we should say.
If the plan is that these trees are the long-term plan, and what we saw was the 10-year result, let's have the 10-year trees now.
You're saying propose the size of the tenure as installation sizes.
Yes. Yes. Or something like that.
And if you plant them now before the houses go in, since that's a later development, they'll be growing.
Well, you might want to state it in a way that it's not, what you want to function, like you could say, I want installation of the initial plantings to be sufficient that only the roofs are showing in whole. I mean, you might see something through the trees, but that, so that they meet that level.
And they are deciduous, so you're going to see it every winter.
Sure. But it's still, even a deciduous tree serves a buffering purpose. Would you like that?
I mean, this is all designed to be here for 50 years, not just 10 years.
I think the way Skip proposed it is more quantifiable.
Okay.
Does anyone else have a suggestion?
I mean, I would tend to word it in a way that makes it clear that we don't approve of these four houses being placed here for the reasons Julia said, but in the alternative, put forth the language that Skip's recommending. And I would add to this because number nine already basically says the placement of the house. The houses will be decided by the Board of Commissioners, and I think our final safety net there is to say, and the final grading. Those three things combined together should help to, one of the three, or a combination thereof, should help to meet the goal that was stated by Mr. Bowler with regard to this particular corner, although I fully agree with Julia, the four houses shouldn't be there.
But we keep saying that.
I know.
I prefer not to go into the grading and all of that, because at this point, that starts to tie the hands of the future homeowners and things, and complicate and muddy the waters. I would prefer to deal with it right up front, get more sizable trees, and something that's sufficient plantings today, rather than worry about the grading, the placement, and all of that.
The Board of Commissioners is already doing house placement.
Only on the one house, I thought. Oh.
Four houses.
They asked us to review this.
Yeah, I don't know if the grading thing would be helpful personally, but-
Madam Chair, if I may, so if you wish to quantify, there are tree heights on the profile. So if you, just a suggestion, you may want, as Mr. Kunt is looking for, you may want to say, we wish trees of this height, which is the 20-year height, to be planted, you know, as part of the subdivision. If that's something you wish to have, something to hang your hat on as far as the height of the tree at the start of the development.
Okay.
I think that's the best way for us to approach it. I don't think reiterating the fact that we don't want the houses there, I mean, they're already approved. Let's just talk about what's on our table right now.
My response to that is, they may have already approved it, but they could certainly change it if they wanted to. If we wanted to move, if we want to recommend that they be moved further away from the crest of that hill, the Board of Commissioners could certainly adopt that. We're free to make-
We've already given preliminary plan approval.
Well, can we-
Haven't we?
Yeah, let's just-
I think we should move forward.
Straw vote? Who's in favor of Regina's-
Skip's proposal.
Skip's proposal.
My proposal is 10-year trees now. Would you say, okay, on balance? Something like it is the way I put it, but okay.
Yeah, I just want to ask Mr. Narsini, what is the wording for the size that we're looking for?
I'm going to defer to Mrs. Thomas. So am I correct in thinking that that's a 20-foot conifer?
Yes.
And that's quite a large tree, but, you know.
Four houses.
So if you wish to put that in, that's your recommendation, that you wish to see 20-foot trees planted, which is a 20-year tree.
So perhaps, you know, our recommendation would be we would like to see 50% of the trees, or some percent of the trees. You don't want every tree to be the same size going in.
It's four houses out of 72.
Okay, fine, fine. Okay, 20 feet.
Do we want to hear from the public on any of this again, or?
Oh, we will.
Those four houses seem to have a disproportionate visual impact, though.
They already got the evergreens.
Mike? Doug, you can't hear.
Oh, you don't have your mic on, Doug.
Those four houses seem to have a disproportionate visual impact. That's one of the reasons that we-
Yes, we all agree, I think, on that, don't you? I mean, that's sort of the justification for asking for such, they're very expensive trees, asking for them for this site because they have such a huge impact visually.
But are we sure that 36 and 37 aren't going to be seen? Did we already determine that those two lots are not-
But they're going to be seen.
I'd just like to point out to the planning commission that there's two conditions regarding the lots along this road. There's one condition regarding the landscape, which applies to all the lots along the road, and then there's a second condition regarding the placement of the house, which only has to do with these four lots.
Right.
Just to make sure that's clear.
So whatever we're saying about the trees, would that apply to all the houses along this road, then? Does that apply to all six houses, then?
However you wish to make your recommendation, I'm just pointing out in the conditional use decision-
Applies to all six.
There's one condition that talks about the landscaping to all the houses, and then there's a second condition that has to do with the, I'm sorry, not the conditional use decision, but the preliminary plan approval. And then the second condition has to do with the placement or location of the houses on these four lots.
So I think, to go back to Susan's earlier point, that it's not just the view from the corner, but it's also the view coming down to that point that we're concerned about. We want this to apply to that entire buffer strip. Am I correct?
I would think so. I would agree with you.
What the conditional use, I think what Mrs. Morgan was trying to let us know is that the conditional use decision is not just regarding these four lots, but all lots, 32 through 310. So Skip has mentioned the buffering for the four trees, but in fact, it's nine lots. I think that's not 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40. Yeah, nine lots, that they are all supposed to be provided for with a level of buffering that provides for maximum protection.
That sounds good. Okay, so do you want to go over the wording of that part again?
Let's read it again.
What do you got?
I guess what we could say is that it applies, does it start with 310, Susan?
Starts 32 through 310.
Okay, so lots 32 through 310 should have the, quote, 10-year height after planting tree now.
No, this is 20-foot high trees.
20-foot high trees. Well, 20-foot high evergreens and deciduous? Okay. Right?
Yeah, I prefer not to say all of them. I mean, I think that you want it to look, we still want it to look pretty and naturalistic.
The township arborist approved saplings, so, you know, that's like understory trees. I'm not saying you shouldn't have those.
I'm saying we also need the saplings.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But the trees that were going to be 12 feet-
Exactly.
Just raise the height of those.
Raise the height of those trees.
The 12-foot trees should be 20-foot trees.
That does it.
That does it. Okay.
One lots 32 through 310.
Okay.
We can do, if we want to do something else, we can, but we can make that a separate motion.
No, I could just hold on to that, and let's see what else.
One question, are they being specified by height currently on the planting plan or by caliper? By height?
Height.
By height.
There's a combination. There's a combination.
I think the height's more important than the caliper.
Yeah, it's a combination. There's a height and caliper.
So there could be an adjustment from those-
So the evergreens are at heights, and the deciduous trees, the smaller ones are at five feet because they're more sapling, and then we've got a one to one-and-a-half-inch and a two to two-and-a-half-inch caliper.
So what would the average height of the two-and-a-half-inch caliper be?
Around 12 feet. Generally, you would say 12 to 14. I went with the lower one because I wanted to make sure that, you know, it was the lowest it could be in terms of the reality of the view. So 12 to 14 is the general height you would go by.
What would be an equivalent caliper for, say, an 18 to 22-foot tree?
Four and a half?[1659.73]
Without looking it up, maybe 5 inches.
That, would that be extremely expensive, or...
They're very pricey, yes.
I mean, would you have an idea?
Exponentially pricey.
No, I just want to get this right because I want it to be something that makes sense.
I think, I think it does.
We haven't quantified it yet.
I don't know offhand, but it is an exponential number.
What would you say would be, like, the next caliper up from the 2 and 1/2, like, that's typically...
Like 3 to 3 and 1/2 inch caliper?
How do you guys feel about quantifying separately the conifers and the deciduous trees? Because that's how it's done. If we want to ask for 20-foot conifers and, say, 3 and 1/2 inch caliper, because it's the conifers that provide the year-round.
Yeah, but they're...
Because we really do have to kind of come down to some kind of decision that's practical.
Well, that's why I keep saying it's the 10-year, not the, you know, you're planning for that part of the life cycle of the tree, you're just accelerating it by 10 years. I don't know if that's the right way to do this.
Yeah, I think that that's getting too far into detail. I don't want to be negotiating with ourselves.
But we can't, we can't put something out there that doesn't have any meaning to say...
It does have meaning.
How could, how do they know, then, what that equates to?
If we say that the trees that are identified now to be 12 feet, well, it's a 12, 14-foot range.
We've defined the conifer, yes, but we haven't defined the deciduous yet.
I think what Regina is trying to...
It's the same thing to me. There are also, aren't there also the conifers on the same scale?
No, I think what Regina is trying to say...
Is that what I missed?
Is that if you read the forestation mitigation plan, the evergreens are referred to with regard to height, and the deciduous are referred to with regard to caliper. And that's where I think Regina is trying to get more specific. She wants the wording to be consistent so that we have a caliper that is equivalent to a 20-foot height for the deciduous, because that's how it's on those.
Okay, but I think that because the caliber's not important to us, the other way you can identify the trees is by their height.
No, the caliper is what defines a deciduous tree. So it is important, it's what defines it. So I'm looking for a caliper that makes sense with our intentions, that's also something that the developer can live with and that, you know, is realistic to ask for. So I'm thinking a 3 and 1/2 inch versus a 2 and 1/2 inch is...
The cost of, say, a 5-inch caliper versus a 2 and 1/2-inch caliper, are we talking, like, twice as much or 25 times as much?
I can't accurately answer that. I don't, it's more than twice as much, though. But I, without having time to research it, I can't accurately answer it.
Could be five times as much, Doug.
Okay, we've gotten into the weeds, people.
It's a significant difference.
I understand. If the, is it possible to plant a tree that's, a deciduous tree that's 15, 20 feet tall? Is it done?
Oh, all the time.
It was done across the street from me on Neabram's Lane, second house in. They planted a whole bunch of really big trees last year.
On Atlee Road, they just put in about 10 that are 25-foot evergreens or more.
What about deciduous tree?
Yes is the answer, Doug. It's just dollars. It's just money.
We're moving on.
Well, we have something out there.
Okay, other items we want to have in our motion? Do you want to put in something about the trail, the sidewalk and/or trail? Does anybody want to put something in about that?
Oh, yes.
And how do you want it to read?
At least the, we need to make certain that we have the right-of-way along the edge, and that it is our long-term intent to put some kind of right-of-way. All, to put some kind of sidewalk or pathway, the way we did up at, let's see, at Annerbury?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It may not necessarily have to be, but it's got to be something where people can walk along the edge of Newtown Road, at least along the township portion of the property up to this property.
Don't we have that already? And if we have it, we shouldn't be putting it in a motion if we have it.
The township could go inside the wall.
No, 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 Doug's talking about outside the wall, right?
Okay.
We have the right-of-way now outside the wall.
Yes.
No, I thought we didn't.
Well, I'm talking about...
We have the right-of-way.
We do.
Yes, we do. Peter?
Where, is the wall, is there any portion of that wall that's on the property that the township's buying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, down the lower field.
The field, the wall doesn't go the entire length, though. There's fence there.
Do you see the green on the plan, the green buffer at the top of the road there?
Yes.
I think the wall goes down through there.
Where's the township property?
That whole green section up until the buffer line where those trees are is where the township property would be.
If the township were to build a, it's not safe to walk, starting from the beginning, it's not safe to walk between Newtown Road and the wall, okay? I understand that. If the township were to build a sidewalk along Newtown Road at the end, where it reaches the end of the wall, will we have an easy way to go down there? They have to walk around the end of a wall like a butt-out, or is the wall just stopping? You could build steps or a ramp or something there. And is that on our property or...
I can't design, we can't design that trail tonight. I don't, I think I don't understand your question.
If we can get the connection between the portion which is...
Right.
I don't think that's something we can decide now.
I agree. We, we have the right-of-way on the, between the wall and the road.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So we don't have to have a motion to reserve the right-of-way, we have the right-of-way. So I think the question before us now is not to do that, but if you, if people have talked about, you know, wanting to do something inside the wall, I don't personally want to, but I would like to, but I think it's a huge burden. But if you want that, I think that's what we need to focus on, because the others are already in writing. So I understand.
Yes.
I think there's probably different requirements for a stone trail versus a sidewalk, too.
Okay, but, that's not the point. Okay, does anybody want to ask for, I think we're past the point of asking for a trail inside the wall? Yes, it would be great, but I think we've been there, the commissioners have, I think we move on. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other items that people are going to want to see in our motion?
I do want to hear, now that Amy's listened to the conversation about that one road where they're not putting in the cul-de-sac, from a traffic perspective, do you have a thought on that, granting that waiver? Or, I mean, clearly, they need to ask for the waiver, that was your point, but do you have an opinion about that one, that dead-end road?
It would be my preference to have the turnaround there.
Okay. I mean, my, I would say that we recommend not granting that waiver. They haven't even officially asked for it. That was Amy's point.
Right, that's good. Anything else? Anything staff would encourage us to include in our motion? Any references to your letters?
Obviously, yeah, they need to, you know, do all the...
Obviously, me, we...
Yeah, all the other, you know, things that are stated in here, up to and including asking for the additional waivers that are, that were identified by traffic, by staff.
Did you want to say something?
That was what I was going to get, that you include the three waivers for the, the waivers for the three intersections that aren't 90 degrees.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
Okay, who would like to make a motion?
Let me recap to make sure I haven't missed anything. We dropped out any reference to trail of the wall inside or not because that's already covered, correct? Correct. I think that we're saying, and I agree with Julia, that we're asking for the installation of the 12-foot trees wherever they were planned to be 20-foot trees.
Regina wanted to word that differently.
She wanted to word it with caliper.
She wanted the conifer trees to be 20 feet and the caliper to increase...
Well, maybe...
Three and a half.
Well, I could live with 3 and 1/2 as opposed to 20-foot.
Yeah.
And I think we should say...
Well, the schedule shows 2 and 1/2 to 3 that there's zero in that category. Then the next category is up to 2 and 1/2. Like, do we want to put some in the 2 and 1/2 to 3 and some in the 3 to 3 and 1/2 or something like that?
I'd rather not. We didn't get that specific. I think we want to say what our goal is. And our goal is to have higher trees that screen the houses and then, rather than, I don't want us to design the landscape plan.
So we want them in a range that's higher than what's there now.
Yeah.
If we have an arborist on retainer, he could give, he could provide detail, or we could recommend that our goal is to provide the 10-year trees today.
Skip.
Yeah.
That we, that the applicant provide trees of sufficient caliper and height to match a 10-year growth tree such that the conditions of screening in the conditional use are met. That's, and then the arborist is going to tell them what to put.
Hold that thought.
Say it again slowly.
Okay. That the applicant install trees along the buffer, lots 3-2 through 3-10, of sufficient caliper, oh, thank you.
Well...
Of sufficient caliper and height...
Okay.
Height of 20 feet. That's of sufficient caliper and height of 20 feet at the time of planting to provide the maximum protection of the view shed as set forth in the conditional use decision.
What she said. The view shed to provide the maximum protection of the view shed to...
As set forth in the conditional use decision.
Okay, then we could do that as a separate motion, too.
We don't have to, we'll do it separately. Okay. So I'm going to try to reread what I think Susan just said. The applicant is to install trees on lots 3-2 through 3-10 of sufficient height...
Sorry, hang on. The motion has to, doesn't the motion have to be, we recommend or not recommend final approval, blah, blah, blah?
We recommend that approval contingent that the applicant installs trees on lots 3-2 through 3-10 of sufficient caliper and height to be the equivalent of 20 feet in height at the time of planting to provide the maximum protection of the view shed as set forth in the conditional use decision.
Yep, Skip, the only thing is the words have to be in the buffering strip along lots 3-2 through 3-10, not on the lots themselves. So just add in, in the 100-foot buffer strip adjacent to those lots.
Okay, can we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Want to oppose? Thank you.
Good. Was that the only one we're going to put for us?
No, now we can do others. We want to do, we want to do them separately just to be clear.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was just for that motion?
Yeah.
Oh, that motion I was going to...
Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you.
That motion, yes.
Okay, so our other motion is going to be the standard one to incorporate comments, to satisfy the comments of our staff recommendation letters and to, well, that would include the waivers, right?
But didn't the motion we just have recommend...
Peter?
Yes.
Do we do this in separate motions?
Do what?
Then what we're doing.
The approval, the waivers. Short answer, yes. You can do as many or as few motions as you wish.
Okay. So, do you want to make that motion? Do you want to ask Peter for the wording? What do you want to do?
I would like Peter to weigh in on that.
And the condition you're seeking here is to incorporate the staff letters?
To make sure that the staff's comments have been addressed and...
The three waivers? The new waivers?
And the new waivers that weren't mentioned yet, right? Yes.
That you would wish to recommend the board grant final plan approval conditioned upon satisfaction of all the comments contained in the staff letters produced by, or written by Mr. Phillips, Ms. Kaminski, and Mr. Gabriel. Sorry, Steve, I forgot your last name. Mr. Gabriel, are there any other waivers you wish to recommend or wish not to recommend?
Yeah, I think we didn't want to recommend the cul-de-sac at the end of Road, oh, we wanted a cul-de-sac at the end of Road D.
So you could add that, that also conditioned upon the applicant providing a cul-de-sac as opposed to the 30-foot widening at the end of private Road D, as in David.
I don't know that it's private.
Yes, it is.
That's a preference. Thank you, Peter. What he said...
I specifically asked after that. That's why I asked, that's why I made that recommendation. You both can stick. I will. Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry. You want the cul-de-sac or you want the wider road?
I want the wider road.
Okay. Let's just do a little straw vote. Who wants the cul-de-sac? Who wants the wider road? Okay.
All right.
Done.
Okay, so go up.
I think, I think we'll adopt Peter's language.
Skip is going to move that, what Peter said.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the language expressly, including the reference to the cul-de-sac at the end of Road D as a recommend, a recommendation of the planning commission.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. If there's anything else, we are done. Thank you so much. This has been quite the process.
My only question was, in incorporating those recommendations, Amy's recommendation was simply that you needed a waiver. It wasn't that you grant the waiver on those three non-90-degree intersections. And I was, I thought you were going to include in your recommendation that you recommend those waivers on those three intersections. It was the one on the cul-de-sac that you were...
No, you're right.
So can you just amend it to that?
We would rather like to amend our motion. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I move, we recommend, as another condition of the approval of the plan, that the waivers for the three, for the three intersections which are not 90-degree intersections, the waivers be granted. It's a recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You have to submit them.
We're not submitting them for you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
How about a two-minute break?
We are taking a 10-minute break.
Oh, I said two.
We are taking a five-minute break. (Laughter)
You know, proposed and has an opportunity to digest it as well.
And we only have one item on our November meeting so far.
Uh, oh, I just, I don't know.
Yeah. Steve, only, there's only one item on the November meeting so far?
Yeah, they would know what's on the November.
Steve.
Steve. Not you, Steve.
Mr. Norsini.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Is there only one item? Is that what you're saying so far on our November meeting?
Well, there would be whatever may or may not be continued from this meeting.
Yes.
The only new item is the Bloomingdale Project.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, we are not at this time planning, going to schedule another meeting. So would you like to wait until November?
Could you vote and ask everyone again? Because I think everybody is going to vote. There was going to be consensus possible.
No, the consensus looked like that some people would be, would be willing sometime to have an extra meeting, but since we don't need one.
Okay, well, then we'd like to not present tonight, present on the third and be first on the agenda if that, if we get on to that request.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Is that okay, Steve?
If we're continued, I know that, again, if Stratford Avenue is continued, normally they would be.
All right.
I'm not asking.
Well, really, you don't set our meeting agendas.
I'll ask for Steve to respond, that's all. I'm just asking.
Mr. Norsini.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Is there something more exciting going on?
No, we're trying to work out the schedule if you should choose to do so. That's all.
And now I lost my train of thought.
Do we have the ability to put them first?
For November. Is there any problem with that?
You, you set the agenda, madam. I mean, you'll, you can set that.
You have no issue with that.
We list it where we think it should go.
Okay.
But when it comes here, you as the chair have the ability, as you've done in many meetings, to switch things around.
Right. I'm comfortable with that. We'd be happy to put you on first.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And I will give you a 30-day extension.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, George.
Good evening.
Next on our agenda is 105, 205 Stratford Avenue. Oh, let, okay, you're all right? All right, we've seen this before and we asked to table it. I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
I just didn't want the applicant to leave. I actually have a point of order question. The fact that the applicant doesn't want to make an application, does that preclude us from asking a couple of questions about the application of our own staff tonight? And I didn't want to have you walk out the door, Nick, and then have me want to ask a question. That, that's my question.
I would prefer we not start a discussion if we're not going to finish it. And have the presentation. If you have a specific question for staff, you can call them and ask them.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, at our last meeting, we, I believe we tabled this and we had a list of concerns. There were still a lot of outstanding issues. Do you want to just go ahead and tell me where you are now?
Yes, good evening. I'm George Brosman. I represent the applicant and equitable owner of this property, which is 205 Stratford Avenue. I'm here with Beau Erickson, who you know, and Chuck Dobson, who you know. We're here on a minor subdivision. It's five lots. There'll be one, one, the existing home to remain on one lot, so only four new homes. We were here on September 2nd. You asked us to table and we did. You asked us to do certain things. I believe we have done all of them and I'm going to have Chuck come up and go through them. I would say that we are asking for your recommendation of final plan approval. Chuck can touch on this, but we believe we can comply with all of the applicable comments and the township engineer review, review letters and the, the planning consultant review letter. And we will, we will be discussing with the commissioners the details about the dedication of the right-of-way when we get to them. But I would like Chuck to come up and go through what we've done to the plan since he saw it on September 2nd.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George. Good evening, everybody. As George indicated, we did receive the review letters from the township consultants and I think Roger Phillips' letter dated September 29, he actually starts out his letter kind of summarizing some of the things that we talked about last month. So I think as a point of continuity, I'll just go ahead and start with some of those items so you can see how we've addressed it and what the end result of us addressing those items are. First and foremost was, there was a request for, and I'm going to turn to the grading plan to show you. The original plan that we submitted showed four new lots and each proposed lot had a subsurface recharge bed that captured and infiltrated the entire 100-year storm. Subsequently, we were able to address and meet the criteria for this particular rate control district in the township's ordinance. And effectively, that means that you have to take a two-year storm and reduce it to a one-year storm of 5 to a 2. It mandates effectively a small reduction in the flows after construction as compared to pre-construction. Understanding your comments and concerns last, last month and also the concerns of a adjoining resident who lives down further in the watershed, what we did is we added a, an infiltration and detention berm up on the, the area of Lot Number 2. Now, I think it's important to note that the effect of this berm as compared for, you know, when you're looking at the stormwater management, we took the post-developed flows and reduced them to more than, I don't want to say this. They are now, the post-developed flows are going to be less than half of what leaves the site today. So there is a significant reduction in the stormwater runoff from this property. So that, that was addressed first and foremost. I think one of the things too, as far as the configuration and location of that berm is concerned, there are a number of large trees along this buffer here. So what we did was we basically, we designed this berm to fit within the areas that was available for it, but not impinging upon the drip lines of the trees there, so we would have no impact on those trees. So that was some, one of the things that we tried to do. All of that information was made part of the post-construction stormwater management calculations, which were submitted to township and the township engineers reviewed, and it's my understanding that he's satisfied that we've done the reduction as, as requested. The next item that we talked about was how we're going to basically treat the physical configuration of the roads, both Stratford Avon Avenue and Eagle Road. Your ordinance calls for requirements for road width. It also calls for requirements for curb and also sidewalks. In keeping with our discussion last month, we did not, we are not proposing to widen the roads. We are not proposing to add curbs. However, we do show a four-foot wide concrete sidewalk along the entire frontage along Eagle Road and also along Stratford Avenue. I'm going to kind of take a little bit of a sidestep here. You're going to note that the sidewalk actually has, it meanders around a couple of large trees here. I appeared at the September Shade Tree Commission meeting and we discussed that. And I'm going to kind of summarize what the results of that meeting were, that we are able to plant for buffer requirements and tree replacement requirements, all but 12 trees. So the applicant has agreed to a $500 per tree that we don't include. So effectively, there's a $6,000 fee in lieu for the trees that we cannot fit on the site comfortably. With respect to these two particular trees, the condition of the Shade Tree Commission's approval was that, should these trees be damaged during construction, that the applicant would have to agree to either replace compensatory trees on the site or agree to a fee in lieu. So they were fine with that. We agreed to that. So we were able to get their approval and we moved on from there. The next item is the, the right-of-way widths along Eagle and Stratford. Your consultants pointed out that Stratford Avenue has a required right-of-way of 60 feet, whereas the existing right-of-way currently is 40 feet. They also indicated that Eagle Road has a required, a required right-of-way of 80 feet. However, the discussion was that 80 feet is probably a little too much and the planning commission supported basically a 60-foot right-of-way along Stratford Avenue as well as Eagle Road. Now, we have shown that right-of-way on the plans and I think, I'll let George take up this matter after I get through the summary of items that I want to discuss with you, but there is simply a question about, you know, when the dedication of that right-of-way should occur. So I'll let Mr. Brosman attach, address that in a moment. The tree plan, the next one was the tree planting plan that keeps the trees on existing Lot 2 and on Stratford Avenue side. We have done, we've modified all the grading so that all of these trees along this northeastern property line are now going to stay. We've done our best to save as many trees along this, the Eagle roadside as we could. There's very few trees that were impacted along Stratford Avenue primarily because the points of access are rather limited compared to the overall frontage that you have along the site there. The applicant has agreed to work with the Board of Commissioners on traffic calming and potentially contributing to traffic calming. And there was, there is a note on the plan. Draw your attention to sheet number one. There's a note on the plan, Note 15, that says, "Simply in lieu of a traffic study, the applicant offers a $1,500 contribution to Radnor Township to be used to repair the existing streetlights along the property frontage on Eagle Road and on Stratford Avenue as applicable." And that actually dovetails into the, the next item, which was the, recommend that the, the applicant make improvements to the existing streetlights and the installation of vegetative buffer strip between the sidewalk and the streets to aid the stormwater runoff. I do want to draw your attention to the fact that the sidewalk is located three feet from the cartway, so you have a three-foot non-paved area between the sidewalk and the cartway. And I think based on the grades that exist out there along the street, those for the, for the smaller storm events, they'll be very effective in capturing and infiltrating a lot of that water without having it to run off either down into the storm drain system or through the property or elsewhere. And that's really it. I think that, you know, I know in Roger's letter, he notes that there's a few items that he'd like to be clarified, which we can do. There's nothing here that we can't address. And I would say the same thing for Gilmore's letter with, with respect to traffic. So pretty much, we've made the change that you've asked for. Everything else is, can comply and we're hopeful to get your recommendation this evening.
Thank you very much. You are putting in the sidewalks, right?
I'm sorry?
The sidewalks are on the plan.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. All right, who would like to start? Anyone?
I'd just like to get some clarity on the, these right-of-ways. There were two letter references it, as well as Steve's letter. The, on Eagle Road, the actual required right-of-way is 80 feet. And yet it says 40-foot right-of-way and 30-foot required right-of-way, but I, on the, on page 5 I'm on. And I think that where you're writing 30-foot required right-of-way, you're actually doing the halfway line.
Correct.
Okay.
We had, it was, it was, my, our recollection is that the planning commission supported only a 60-foot right-of-way along Eagle Road. So since we don't have control of the other side, we can only control what's on our half. So we go 30 feet from center line, which is half of the requested right-of-way that we discussed.
Right, but I, if I understand our planner's comment, the required right-of-way is actually 80 feet. So that would be a 40-foot right-of-way.
That's correct.
And I just want to hear.
We did discuss that last time and the commission did support 60 feet.
I want to clarify that with Mr. Norsini's comments that he made at the beginning of the meeting with regard to his feelings about the 80-foot right-of-way on Eagle Road. Because if I'm reading this all correctly, what our planner is saying is that we, the setback line should be calculated from the required right-of-way, not from the existing right-of-way. Whether or not we give you the 60-foot right-of-way on Eagle Road, the way I'm reading this, your front yard setback is being calculated from the existing right-of-way line, not the 60-foot or 30 for your half, required right-of-way that we're proposing on Eagle Road.
That's right. There's two issues here. One is.
Yes.
How much right-of-way should be dedicated? That's the 30 feet versus the 40 feet or the 60 versus the 80.
Right.
On that, it was very clear last time that the commission supported the 60 and not the 80. And I believe that's in the consultant's letter. Mr. Norsini has a different personal opinion from what I heard earlier. On the issue of where do you measure the setback, we understand the staff's position. I don't think I'm going to change their mind on that, so we're just asking for your recommendation. If you want to go along with them, that's fine. We think that's something we're going to have to talk to the commissioners about. How much right-of-way we're going to give to them and under what condition? And that condition would be, where do you measure it from?
Right, and if I'm reading this correctly, you're effectively, the way you're calculating your front yard setback on Eagle Road, you're effectively keeping the 40 yard, the 40-foot right-of-way because you're calculating it from the existing right-of-way, not the dedicated right-of-way, which is what we are asking you for, which is, by the way, 10 feet to your favor because we were recommending the 60-foot right-of-way, not the 80 that Eagle Road requires. Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Norsini?
My comment was, I think the applicant should meet the requirement of the 80-foot right-of-way, i.e. half, which would be 40 foot on their property and 30 foot on Stratford Avenue.
Right, but in addition, where the front yard setback is being measured, Roger, is from the existing right-of-way, not even the new one.
And I'll let the solicitor opine on this, but all the plans that come before you, the setbacks are measured off the ultimate right-of-way, which would be, if it went by the book, the 40-foot part of the 80-foot right-of-way.
Well, or at least the new right-of-way that we might be at.
Correct. Whatever that ultimate right-of-way would be, whether it be 30 foot from center line or 40 foot from center line.
Right.
Could you give us your recommendation, why you feel that the 80-foot right-of-way is necessary on Eagle Road?
I, I feel that the applicant should, when possible, any applicant should try to build within the limits set forth in our rules and regulations.
Yes.
Okay, that's my main concern. Secondly, we go through this often. I don't know what type of public works or public improvement project may come down the road 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now. Once the right-of, right-of-way acquisition can become very expensive in the future, whereas right now, just by complying with our requirements, the township gets right-of-way. To be, possibly be used, it may never be used, but it is there.
Is there a way that we could require them to stick to the, what's in the code for the 80-foot right-of-way, but let them keep the houses where they are?
Are the houses being proposed with the 80-foot right-of-way in mind right now or are they being proposed?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
No, they're not.
The, the current plan does not contemplate an 80-foot right-of-way.
No, no, there's. Let me just clarify. There's two different issues. There's how much right-of-way we're going to give them, but where they are measuring their front yard setbacks on Eagle Road is from the existing 40-foot right-of-way, not even the 60-foot that we are granting them or the 80-foot that Mr. Norsini would like. I know, but first I want to ask. 40-foot existing total, yes. Correct.
Could I say something to?
Of course.
We can comply, if you want us to measure from the 60-foot setback, if you want us to measure that from the new line, we can comply with that. It'll change slightly, I think, some of the designs, but we can comply with that. We, you know, we, we are going to have a discussion with the commissioners about it, but we can comply. So if you make that your recommendation.
Well, here's what I think. I'm not unhappy with the plan the way it's laid out.
And we will, we will dedicate that right-of-way.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, and maybe that the other, the other planning commission members don't agree with me, but I'm looking at the plan and I think it works in the neighborhood and I'm, I like the way it's laid out. I think it will work. If we have a concern that there is any reason we would need that 80-foot right-of-way in the future, then I think we should ask for that to be dedicated.
That's not my concern.
I know, but I want to say what I want to say first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, and then my other concern about the, the measurement of the setbacks is that I don't see why we would treat this property different than any other property and we measure from the ultimate right-of-way, do we not? Okay. Is there some reason you think this is different than our other plans in the township?
I understand the staff's position, so I, I don't want to have that fight. So if you make that.
See, I don't even understand what the fight is. Why do you have a different position is my question.
I'm saying we can comply with that. We will, we will talk to the commissioners about it.
Okay.
If you want to recommend it that way, we're good with that.
I think to clarify, you're saying you can comply with the 60-foot. You'll move the houses to 10 feet for that if you need to. I don't think you were just saying you'd move it 20 feet. And you, you disagree with the 80-foot right-of-way.
We disagree with the 80. We would ask, as it was stated last time, that we get the waiver to do the 60 and then we, we can, we can comply with that if you make the recommendation that the right-of-way line.
And, and to further.
Be the place to measure from the set, the setback.
I think you're also, you also said that in effect you could live with the 80-foot, but not if that changes the setback from 10 to 20 feet.
Yes.
Can these lots support the setback required for an 80-foot right-of-way on this size lot? I mean, I'm not saying.
No, we're saying.
They would be ideal, but are they large enough front to back?
It really takes away, it takes away our area for our decks. One of the nice things about this plan was we were, we have this common driveway back here, so we haven't added any curb cuts to Eagle Road. And, you know, as we push the homes back, we get closer to that common driveway. So we thought the 60 feet was more than anything anybody would ever need for Eagle Road, but gives these homes a reasonable amount of, you know, deck space and things like that. We want them to be nice.
That's your preferred design if, but it, they actually, it's feasible. The lots aren't too small to make that happen. It's just your configuring. I just want to make sure that you're not making the lots so small that they don't comply. It's just the way you're choosing to function.
In fact, these lots are almost double the zoning requirement.
So, so it's not, it's not that you're restricted and can't provide the rear setback. It's just that you're doing different things with the configuration.
The lot size is 7,000 square feet is the minimum in this zoning district. Lot 2, we won't count. That's the existing home. That's 52,000. But every lot, Lot 1 is over 13,000. Lot 3 is 14,000, over 14,000. Lot 4 is almost 12,000. Same for Lot 5. So we're way over the minimum here. And we can fit a home and, you know, it's just how to make the design a little better.
If I may, one of the things that we looked at after last month's discussion was, if it needs to be 60, we can make it 60. Our, our preference would be to dedicate the right-of-way after the plan's been approved, so there's really no issue. I mean, the setbacks wouldn't necessarily be measured from the 60. They'd be measured from the 40. If we have to measure from the 60, we can comply. Beyond that, what happens is, just geometrically, the houses start to move back towards the common driveway. So where you had comfortable space to maneuver, to access, to basically live on these lots, you're now compressing it, which could potentially force individual curb cuts on Eagle Road, which I don't think anybody really wants. So we thought that if, okay, we can live with 60, we would have the discussion with the Board of Commissioners, whether they wanted the dedication prior to, after, if they wanted this houses to respect that, we could do it. In either way, we can make it work and, and up to tonight, we had been going off of the 60 and 60. It wasn't until we got here tonight that it was potentially, well, now it's 60 and 80. So that's where we are. And I think, I think practically speaking, the 60 probably represents the best middle ground for this project as it sits on this particular piece of property with all the existing conditions and what it is the applicant is trying to achieve.
So what you really want is, is really from the setback more so than it is from the right-of-way. It's not the right-of-way issue so much as the setback issue.
And we don't want to take that up with you. We're.
That's what they're looking for is they want.
We're not, we're not asking for that relief from you.
But that's the end result.
You don't have the power to grant a setback variance, so that would have to be the zoning board.
No, what I'm saying, that's the, the feature of, you're giving us a real reason to grant a, a different right-of-way.
I've said it 10 times.
A 60-foot right-of-way.
So having the background of what that would do to the design helps understand why that's important. It's not, it's not capricious to grant this, this right-of-way.
Good word.
Yeah, if you, if we give the 60 that everybody, we thought we had all agreed on last time, I can't imagine anybody has anything like that going down Eagle Road, you know, where we're being singled out for 80, you know. 60 is going to be more than adequate.
Well, we discussed it at the last meeting. Personally, I'm comfortable with 60, but, you know, our staff member wanted to specifically bring that up, so of course we're going to discuss it because that's an important point.
That's why we're all here.
Does anybody know?
Are there other issues that we want?
I'm sorry. Yeah, the property above on this plan here, do you know what the setbacks are, that one? Yeah. Do we know what the right-of-way, right-of-way is on that?
Well, it's probably 40-foot because it would be 40-foot until somebody put a plan in that considered dedication. So it is 40-foot right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can we go to public comment or you have something to skip?
I'm just saying, I didn't attend the meeting, but I know that we've taken the character of the road into account. And certainly Eagle is one of those scenic roads and even if the township had a need to do major infrastructure, I would imagine that a lot of property owners would be unhappy with that.
Yeah. Okay, let's go to, um, let me just check, see if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Please come up.
Thank you. Yeah, no. Steve Elliott, 416 West Avenue. I spoke up against the, or brought up some concerns with the plan when it was first presented. I had some more concise thoughts then, so you'll, I apologize in advance if I'm a little bit all over the place. I do want to kind of go on the record as saying I appreciate the, the berm that they've added and they kind of heard our concerns over stormwater being at the top of the watershed and understanding the amount of stormwater we get in our backyards from that property. The kind of, you know, I think pivoting off of or contributing to the last discussion around the right-of-way and the setback, I, I want to underscore the importance of that decision. I understand that we probably can't, or you can't make final decisions on the setback itself. But Eagle Road is an incredibly narrow street when you're driving, especially when you're driving from West Avenue towards Stratford. Right at the end of this property here, so right where this property starts, that road narrows. And if there is a larger vehicle, you know, I drive a larger SUV and if there's two vehicles, it's almost like a one-lane bridge. My concern over that setback and its correlation, I guess, to the right-of-way is making this road feel like, almost like school lane, you know, next to the middle school. Where I feel like there's, the more you see houses coming there, it's going to feel very, very enclosed. So I have serious concerns over that setback. I think that's a very, very critical piece of information to this plan. And I don't think we should be subjected to a driving hazard or a visual eyesore just because it's going to impact decks or a design. I mean, my recommendation would be get rid of a house. Let's not build three houses there. Build two or build one. Excuse me. I also wanted to note that the Board of Commissioners have received notice from the police commissioner that they're going to be putting a stop sign on the agenda as the traffic calming solution. So contrary to Amy's comments earlier, they are putting a stop sign on Eagle Road to try and reduce speeding. So I, well, again, I think it's appreciated that they're willing to contribute to a traffic calming solution. That's already been taken care of and I don't know what those funds would really go to. They're putting up two stop signs on Eagle Road at West Avenue.
I think you misinterpreted some of the comments earlier. A stop sign has to have certain criterias before you can install it. They're not township criteria. They're PennDOT criteria. And if you meet them, you meet them. If you don't, you don't. You can't just install a stop sign as a traffic calming measure.
Are you up to speed on the Eagle Road traffic calming?
There has to be, there's set guidelines and if they're installing one, I'm, I'm pretty confident that they've met them.
Yeah. No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that it doesn't seem like there's a cause to support, that that's already addressed.
Actually, excuse me, there, it was a site distance issue. That was the reason the stop sign's going in. It's not to slow down traffic.
This is a whole other, it's a whole other discussion. I'm trying to make the point that.
That was my study that you were just discussing. Oh, okay. That, the four-way stop is going in because of site distance.
Exactly. I understand that. You, you saw the site distance. You legally have to put in a stop sign. I understand that. And that was the Board of Commissioners' recommendation to solve the traffic or speeding problem. That's what we're going with.
Speeding problem, it's a, it's a, it's a visual.
Okay, let's move on and let this gentleman continue his comments. Thank you.
All I'm saying is that there's not, there's not an effort there to contribute to. That's it. That's my only comment towards that. Does it make sense? They said they're going to, they are willing to contribute $1,500 towards a traffic calming solution.
Continue your comments.
Am I right or am I wrong? I feel like.
You're right and we get it and we understand.
All right. So the other points I wanted to make. I want to, again, I wanted to underscore the 80-foot right-of-way as well as the setback. And so in the general review from the, I don't even know which one. And so, in the general review from the, I don't even know which one it is, but there's the two comments I had on the general, the comprehensive plan review, the consistency review and the general planning review. I don't recall seeing, were there any frontage designs for what the houses would actually look like? So, I find it difficult to see how the proposed subdivision is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood character. I mean, maybe that's a later hurdle that they have to go through, but I have concerns about that three houses.
Generally, its size of a structure, distance from the street, those kinds of things. It's not just the front architectural detail that they're talking about.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, and I have concerns over what those houses would look like not fitting in. And then the last comment I had was with the comprehensive plan consistency review, to preserve the rural and scenic character of the streets, I think the right-of-way and the setback asks, I think, kind of goes right against that, that those, you're not preserving the rural character of the streets if you're asking to build houses closer to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Who has items for discussion?
Yeah, a little bit. When I think about this end of Eagle Road versus down near Cabrini, this is much more narrow.
Yes.
And ironically, that is the thing that's going to help these neighbors keep the speed down best of all. So, with all due respect to Mr. Norsini, I would be okay with the 60-foot right-of-way because I wouldn't want to see this end of Eagle Road. It actually helps the neighbors that the road is narrow and that trucks and things going through there have to slow down.
Yes.
However, I do not agree with the setback being from the existing right-of-way.
No, and I think we should just not even discuss it. I think Peter has to be in charge of that. I don't think we should decide one way or the other, what we think about it. I think that, I mean, we all have the opinion that we should do it the way we always do it.
Right. Well, it's a zoning issue.
And I agree with you, but I think we should leave that with Peter.
Yes. It would be a zoning issue regardless.
The applicant says he'll comply with the 60.
Correct. But I don't think that we can pass the plans tonight when it's not showing that on the plan. I, that's what we're going to have to ask Peter about.
Of course we can. We just say, we can just say that that's a condition.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, I think that's really my only-
I think the 60 is on today's plan.
The 60 is, but the way the front yard setback is shown on the plans, it is from the existing 40-foot right-of-way.
I know, but that, I think that we leave that up to Peter and we can certainly pass or not, recommend approval or not.
Right.
Anyway.
The, yeah, no, that's my only, really my only comment about the plan.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
The only other question I have is, Roger, do you think that the end of the shared driveway is sufficient for turnaround, what they have there?
Oh, shoot. I do have a question.
I do at this point. We've discussed with the applicant and it was widened to 30 or to 20 feet at that point.
So, that's been looked at. As long as that's been looked at, that's-
Yeah. It originally came in, I believe it was 12. It's been widened to 20.
Julie, I'm sorry. I do have one question for Roger about Lot 5.
Mm-hmm.
And it's kind of a partially an applicant question and partially a Roger question. The impervious for Lot 5 is very close to the limit for the zoning. And I'm curious how the changing of the right-of-way might impact the impervious calculation on Lot 5.
It doesn't.
Okay.
Right-of-ways are accepted from that calculation, so it wouldn't change it at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have a few comments for the applicant. I don't normally write a letter, but I think there's four sections that they need to request waivers from to match existing waivers that they requested. I can provide these to the applicant in an email. I didn't know if the planning commission wanted to hear them and discuss them. They're really, they're duplicates of what's already been discussed.
Okay.
Is there, should, do you want me to just reply?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless you think it's something you need to bring to our attention.
No. I'll, I'll-
I'll get your email.
Yeah. I'll talk to you afterwards, sir. It's nothing new, okay? It's just, it's just covering all of our bases, dotting our i's, crossing our t's.
Okay. Did you have something, Doug? You good?
No.
Okay.
I'm not ready to say.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. That's all right with everybody? I recommend, I recommend, I move that we recommend approval of this preliminary plan with the condition that all the comments in the township review letters are addressed to the township staff satisfaction and that the waivers being forwarded to the applicant by our solicitor are incorporated.
I second that.
Hang on a second.